Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. It is 7:01 PM on June 16th, 2020. Welcome to the June 16, 2020 Meeting of the Edina City Council. This meeting, as you know, is being held electronically in the virtual world to comply with the Governor's Safer at Home order. In order to protect the safety of all residents and staff. All members of the... Whoops, somebody's on both their computer and their phone. Get off one or the other, or go on mute. All members of the Council, staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. Before we begin, there's a few things to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the hearing, and you'll have a couple opportunities to do that. So, Edina is committed to continuing to serve you well electronically, and we are set up, I think, well to receive and hear input on matters. We've been collecting public input through our Council Correspondence Web Form, voicemail, and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org, and I think all the Council members have noticed that it's being used more regularly now for some of these matters. It's important that you that are listening in know that all your comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of the meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. In other words, you don't have to necessarily testify tonight unless you feel compelled to do so. All of that feedback, whether it be written in writing or verbally, is considered equal, regardless of the way it was submitted. So tonight, there's going to be a couple of different times that you can provide comment via telephone. The first is under the Community Comment portion of the agenda. You're allowed to speak about anything that's not on the agenda tonight or scheduled for future public hearing. You're going to have three minutes to do that. Manager Neil is going to watch the clock for you and let you know when your time is up. And then the second opportunity to comment to the Council is in the Public Hearing portion of the agenda. We've got four of those matters in front of us this evening. The first one is the variance appeal for 4248 Alden Drive. The next one is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Preliminary Res zoning Proposal for 5132 and 5136 through 48 Hankerson Avenue by Donae Holmes. And then we've got the subdivision request with variances at 5928 Abbott Avenue South for a second-story build. And then finally, there's a parking staff variance and site plan for M Health Fairview Softdale Hospital at 6401 France Avenue South. So if you want to call in for Community Comment, or you want to provide testimony for the public hearing, here's the number that you call. And the conference number tonight is 896-7019. 896-7019. You'll be given, as I said before, three minutes to speak. Manager Neil will time it, and he'll let you know when you go over the three-minute mark. And then, of course, remember, you don't need to call in tonight if you've already provided testimony in some other form. And call in, but do feel free to call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward, if you have already provided testimony in a written format. Otherwise, we look forward to your testimony this evening. To make sure residents have the opportunity to participate, we're not going to act on these public hearing matters tonight. So those four matters, we're going to continue them for further input until noon on July 15th. That's Wednesday, July 15th. And you can leave a voicemail with your feedback, or you can submit a comment online at BetterTogetherEdina.org on any of those matters. So we thank you now for your patience in advance as we work to conduct this meeting online using different software types. We've got almost 20 people participating from their own homes, and so it makes it a little bit challenging technologically. We hope there won't be any issues, but if there are, we're going to try to fix them as quickly as we can. So I will now open the meeting by calling it to order and request Ms. Allison, our clerk, to do the roll call.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
The next matter on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance and the rise of state, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Should be a flag on the screen. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening that's been published to the public. And is there anyone on the Council that wishes to amend the agenda, or Manager Neil, any modifications proposed to the agenda?
No changes from staff, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Member Staunton. Member Brindle, seconds. Any further discussion with respect to approving the meeting agenda? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
We're next going to go on to Community Comments, so remember, this is your first-time opportunity to speak this evening, so we'll now hear from residents who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight or scheduled for a future public hearing as shown on the agenda. So remember to participate in Community Comment. You can call right now, 800-374-0221. Conference ID, 896-7019. You'll have an operator ask for your name and address, and you'll be put in the queue to speak. And you will have, as you recall, three minutes to speak, and Manager Neil will let you know when your time is up. So we've got a delay here on these call-ins, and I think Director Bennerott will monitor this for us and let us know if we've got people in the queue for Community Comment. Director Bennerott, anybody there?
We do. We have a few people tonight. First, we have Jennifer Brandt. Operator, will you please unmute Jennifer's line? Jennifer, once you're unmuted, please begin by stating your full name and address, including apartment or suite number.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. Ms. Brandt? Jennifer?
Your line is unmuted.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Brandt. I live at 5708 Creek Valley Road, where the proposed driveway and intersection changes on Valley View Road and Creek Valley Road are planning to take place due to a neighborhood signature campaign. This is to fix an issue that doesn't even exist. The concern is about cars speeding further down toward the lower high school fields. The issue is not at the top of the road where I live. At the intersection, they slow down to turn onto Creek Valley Road, but a few houses down the road, they pick up speed. Spending city money to change the intersection won't fix the problem that most neighbors down the road are complaining about. I believe this intersection was created the way it is for a reason. The proposed changes will not only make the intersection more dangerous and less forgiving, but will make it difficult for us to pull in and out of our driveway, bumping up on the curb breath each time because of the way the driveway is designed. When making a right turn onto Creek Valley Road, we would practically have to make a U-turn to make it into our driveway. When this vote passed, it was on the basis that we were to be involved in the design, and right now, we're not happy with the design or the decision. This proposal started with a neighbor that thought it was a good idea. I learned of it as I pulled into my driveway where Chad Milner and our neighbor Rich Fordland were standing and discussing changes to our property. Rich stated they wouldn't do anything we didn't want, yet he and Chad pushed their agenda forward without addressing any of our concerns. As a matter of fact, they completely ignored our concerns. We had to insist on a traffic study, which proved people were not speeding at the top of the road. Some neighbors said they signed because at least it was doing something, hoping it will help with the speeding. There's nothing to stop drivers from speeding as they head down the road. Originally, Chad told us we needed the majority to sign for an approval of these changes. Later, he did accept 20 of the 39 last fall. Clearly, though, we are now no longer at the majority, so I'm asking you to please reconsider. If you were to come and check it out, I think you would see it's not only a waste of money, but the new design will most likely cause accidents due to the smaller margin for error with the decreased space. The neighborhood vote has changed. As I mentioned, we're now in the majority, so there are five that are... There are 38 households. Five are uninsured, plus there's one vacant home. One didn't respond at all. Fifteen want it modified, and there are 16 that disapprove. But several of those do approve of the sidewalk that they are planning to put in on Valley View. So I guess I just want to thank you for your consideration on this.
All right, good. Thank you, Jennifer.
Mayor Hovland, our next caller is Fred Kellett. Operator, will you please unmute Fred's line? Fred, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address.
Line is now open. Fred Kellett, 5805 Creek Valley Road, for over 40 years.
Go ahead, Mr. Kellett.
Okay, this is Fred Kellett, 5805 Creek Valley Road, for over 40 years. This is about the proposed narrowing that Jennifer was just speaking of. Months ago, I signed a petition to... She didn't sign it, but I did, and it was protective of small children speeding to and from the athletic field. It seemed like a good idea at the time, so I signed it without giving it much thought. However, Jennifer's email included a city diagram of how the intersection would be narrowed and reshaped, making her driveway into a U-turn. So I studied the diagram and realized that it would create more problems than it solves. And I emailed a list of common sense reasons to neighbors, city engineers, eventually to council members. My thanks to Councilman Ron Anderson for his visit here last Saturday. Being familiar with the diagram will help to understand the following points. Keeping in mind that the problem it was intended to solve is speeding over the length of our long, winding street. First and foremost, any advantage will be nullified by touching the accelerator after clearing the narrowed entrance. It will have no effect on bidirectional speeding over the remaining 90% of the street. And now, understanding that the narrowed entrance won't help much, let's consider some unintended consequences. Here are conditions that occur simultaneously that will be made worse. During cold weather, vehicles stop at the top of the hill, waiting for children to get off the school bus, narrowing the path by one lane. Delivery vans, garbage mail trucks often stop on the other side, narrowing the path by another lane. Drivers then wait between them to exit north, narrowing the path by a third lane and completely blocking the entrance. After-school traffic slowed by the roundabout makes them wait longer. And if there's no vehicle waiting for a school bus, there can be another one waiting to turn right. So on our way home from the north, we then have to wait on Valley View for the narrowed path to clear. This would invite rear-end collisions by drivers who wouldn't see us until they rounded the curve from the north. Add slippery conditions, they may not be able to brake in time. Presently, the wide path provides the space to get out of the way. Snowplows would have to slow down to make the awkward turn and would leave piles of snow over the curve extension and in front of Jennifer's driveway.
20 seconds left.
Okay. Ron Anderson commented that it may be necessary to hire a separate crew to remove the buildup. Snowplow operators can presently round the curve, keep their momentum, and deposit snow evenly.
That's time.
And the construction period would create further inconvenience, congestion, and safety issues with lane narrowing, roadblocks, and detours. Well, I think my time's probably up. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Kellett. Mr. Bennerott?
Next up, we have Andrew Brown. Operator, will you please unmute Andrew's line? Andrew, then you can go ahead, and please give your full name and address.
Line is now open.
Andrew Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina. Just wanted to ask the City Council/HRA, I do understand that you guys will be looking at another proposal from Frontu regarding the Grand View, old Edina Public Works site. Just wanted to ask them again to keep access and potential land necessary for a potential train station there someday, someday in the future, maybe. Currently, there's only two spots that have sightings in Edina, which would be potential for any sort of passenger rail. One is at that Grand View site, the other one is down in Cahoke. And this one at Grand View, you actually own the sightings and some of the rail line on that sighting on the eastern side. So it's Edina's only chance to have a rail access to the Mayo Clinic and/or a greater rail infrastructure that Suzanne Acadian is asking for state bonding money for study. Just would like to have the Council and the HRA members keep that under consideration, no matter what happens with the old Public Works site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mayor Hovland, I currently do not have anyone else in the queue, though we have more than a dozen other callers on the line. Callers who are already on the line or public looking to call in, please remember, after you've connected, to press star 1 on your telephone keypad if you would like to sort of raise your hand to speak and get into the queue. Council, if I still don't see anyone, I would recommend that you stay on the line for just another minute or so, because there is a slight delay with the broadcast. I wouldn't want to miss anyone.
Okay, good.
And I do have someone. Operator, will you please unmute Pamela's line? Pamela, once you've been unmuted, please clearly state your full name and address.
Your line is now open. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Pamela Bala-Bushko Ray from 4246 Scott Terrace. We've lived here for over 20 years. I'm asking that the recently approved variance for 4248 Alden be revoked. The proposed house by C. Allen is absolutely inappropriate for the site. The footprint is enormous, the height is overbearing, and the garage is not appropriate for this lot.
Pamela?
The priorities of a builder...
Pamela? Pamela, this is a matter that's coming up for public hearing this evening, so you need to wait until we get to the public hearing to talk about it. This is for matters other than what's on the agenda tonight.
Okay, sorry. I just was put through, so...
Yeah, no, that's okay. And your microphone was real scratchy there. What was your last name, please?
It's Bala-Bushko Ray.
All right, thank you. So stay tuned, stay on the line, and when we get to public hearings, I think that's the first matter we have in front of us, so stand by.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next caller we have on the line is Jeff Framke. Operator, will you please unmute Jeff's line? Then Jeff, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Same problem. Line is now open.
Hi, this is Jeff Framke, 4105 Morningside Road, and I am actually calling regarding the public hearing as well.
Okay, Jeff, stand by. We'll get to the public hearing portion of the agenda shortly.
I do not have any other callers in the queue right now. For anyone who is already on the line, if you're calling about an item that is not on the Council agenda and would like to speak under Community Comment, please press star 1 now. Otherwise, Council, I would recommend you hang tight for a minute or so in case we get an additional caller or two.
All right, thank you. We'll wait for you to come back on the line and let us know when it's time to move on. Director Milner is the Creek Valley Road... Creek Valley matter. Is that going to be a public hearing in the future?
No, mayors and members of the Council. You approved that in October of last year for staff to welcome bids and build it this year. So we are about a week away from advertising for bids and constructing the improvements, unless we hear otherwise.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I don't have any other callers at this time. I think it's safe to move ahead.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on from Community Comment now to the city manager's response to community comments, which she usually handles immediately following community comment, covering items that were inquired about at the prior council meeting. I don't recall any commenters from last meeting, so I, Manager Neil, imagine you have no response or any comments to make.
I have no response. I am looking forward to July 21st, when I will have something to report on.
All right. Yeah, you were three times in a row, I think, three meetings in a row, and nothing to report on. So we have council members, a consent agenda in front of us this evening with several items on it. Is there anyone who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any council member? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown?
So moved.
Motion by Member Staunton?
Second.
Second by Member Brindle. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison, with respect to approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Items on the consent agenda are approved. And then we're going to move on to Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. Got a few items in there to cover, and the first one is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We've got a new auditor this year, and I think Steve Olson from Clifton Larson Allen is with us, as well as... I saw John Lorenzini earlier. I don't know if Michelle Hoffman is with us or not. But I'll let Steve Olson introduce the topic. I see him here on the screen, and then we'll have the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by Clifton Larson Allen. Thank you, Steve Olson.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of Council. I'm Steve Olson, the accountant here at the city of Edina. And at the end of every year, an external audit of our financials is required by state statute. And I've been heavily involved with the audit this year, working alongside Kyle Sawyer, the Assistant Finance Director. And the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFFER, is the result of those efforts for 2019, and that report will be submitted to the Office of the State Auditor. It is best practice to change auditors occasionally, so as the mayor said, we have actually switched auditors this year to Clifton Larson Allen, or CLA. So on that note, I'd like to introduce Michelle Hoffman, the principal at CLA in charge of overseeing this audit. Michelle, along with John Lorenzini, the audit manager, have prepared a short presentation for you guys, showing the results of the audit. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle and John.
All right, thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Lorenzini, or Ms. Hoffman?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here. I believe John is going to try to share his screen so that we can get our presentation sort of up on the screen so you can follow along as well. Hopefully, we'll get that up. Excellent. Well, as Steve mentioned, my name is Michelle Hoffman. I'm the principal with Clifton Larson Allen, CLA. We were very excited to work with the city this year. We thank you for the opportunity, and also thank you for the opportunity to be able to come and present too today, despite it being virtual. I did also want to thank Steve and Kyle and Don and everyone else in the finance department. You know, sometimes when you come into a new city, you don't know what you're going to get, but I would say they are very organized. They had everything very well-prepared. They made it pretty easy on us, honestly. So I think they definitely deserve a big thank you. You have a great finance department. They have everything in pretty good order over there. So I definitely want to thank them for their help as well in getting through the audit.
Nice.
All right. Okay. Just to summarize the audit team, I know Steve already introduced John and myself. As I mentioned, I was the principal on the audit. John, who was also going to help me present a few slides tonight, was the manager helping me out on the audit, and then we had a senior associate, Lance, and a few other audit team members that also helped out on the city audit. As far as some audit results, before we get into some financial numbers, which John is going to kind of go over some financial highlights for you, I did want to go over some results of the actual audit. We are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the city's financial statements, ending December 31, 2019. That is the best opinion we can give. You know, it doesn't sound super glamorous, but it is the best opinion we can give. If we felt we weren't able to fully audit the numbers or something was missing, we would have to either modify our opinion or disclaim it in some capacity. We are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the city's annual financial statement. As part of our audit, in addition to looking over the actual financial numbers and balances and transactions, we also review the city's internal controls. We take a look at all the different processes and procedures that go into those numbers, whether it be transactional, you know, scheduled reconciliations, making sure that there is really that segregation of duties in place, there are checks and balances and reviews. I know one person could really kind of control a transaction or an item to prevent, you know, either error or fraud or things like that. So we did look at the city's internal controls. If we had any areas that we felt, you know, had used a lot of improvement or had weaknesses, we would report them to you either as a significant deficiency, or if it was kind of even more extreme, a material weakness. We are definitely very happy to report to you that we have none of those to report, either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Again, it goes back to that, having a very, you know, robust finance department, having a lot of people in place, having those controls and checks and balances. So everything looked really good there. Another area that we look at in part of our audit is Minnesota legal compliance. As you know, there are a whole slew of state statutes that the city must comply with. Things like bidding, we just talked about that you're going up for bid next week for a project, you know, bidding requirements, things around investments, you know, dispersments. It's kind of a whole list of statutes. And every year, the Office of the State Auditor publishes an audit guide, and it goes through a big, long checklist of all these areas, and they want auditors to look and to see that you're complying with all those statutes. Some of them are, you know, to be honest, they can get very nitpicky and very detailed. So it can be very easy to have just something small slip up and maybe not being compliant with even just one of those statutes. So we went through the checklist, looked at all those. Again, very happy to report that we have no legal compliance items that are findings to report to you tonight. As far as some additional required communication to you as governance, and you'll get this in a separate letter as well that you've received, we communicate various things to you. And in that letter, that would include some items that, you know, if we had difficulties in performing the audit, we'd be required to communicate them to you, since ultimately we are responsible for answering to you as governance. And we're happy to report that we have none, so you'll see that in the letter. Another reminder that you'll see that we want to communicate to you is that the financial statements do contain some estimates. There are some amounts in there. Certainly, no one knows how long capital assets are going to last, for sure. There are some estimates that go into the city's liabilities with regards to pensions and OPAB, as far as, you know, some assumptions, rates of returns, things like that. So just a reminder, there are some estimates that go into a few of the numbers, you will see. Another thing that we would communicate to you is whether we had any major uncorrected or corrected misstatements. There were no what we would call major audit adjustments, so nothing that we had to correct that would be of anything significant that we would report to you. There are a couple items in the letter, if you've gone through them, of uncorrected misstatements. And what those are, there are a few items that we are reporting to you. They're not material. If they were material and they were significant to the financials, they would have to be corrected. So, you know, we discussed them with management and concluded they are not material to the financials. But you will see three items in that governance communication letter that you have received. And one is related to some bond discounts that were on the books over the last few years that were actually issuance costs that should have been expensed. So what we did is we, at the year-end of 2019, those are actually correct now, but rather than go back and restate 2018 to correct them, we're not... That's what we're passing on. We're not going back and restating because it's not that large of an amount from the prior year. So as of 2019, those amounts are correct, though, but we chose that not to go back and restate because it wasn't too big of an item for last year. Another item you will see is related to state highway maintenance and construction aid. And this is an impact on the government-wide statements only, so no fund-level impact. But that's related to state aid that you receive and you earn every year that the state kind of holds on to for you until it actually gets spent. And so that was just an entry to put that receivable on the books, since you have actually earned those funds, and you have... You should be recognizing that as revenue. Again, government-wide only, no fund-level impact on that one. And the last one is related to your internal service funds. As you know, you have an internal service fund for risk management. All of your city funds pay fees into that internal service fund to sort of, you know, run it and have its operations going. When we combine all of your funds into your, again, only government-wide, that internal service fund has to be sort of dissolved back into the funds that participate in it. Most of the activity, you know, 75... Most of the activity, you know, 75, 80% comes from governmental funds, so for simplicity purposes, all of the activities put back into governmental funds. Technically, it should be allocated a little bit of it to the, um, uh, business-type activities as well, but many cities choose to, when it's only a very small piece, put it all into governmental activities. So we're just acknowledging that, you know, the city has chosen to kind of allocate it all back to governmental activities on the government-wide. Certainly not a material item, but that is the third item that you'll see in your, in your letter as far as uncorrected misstatements. Um, and there were no new accounting policies as well, which, um, part of that is due to COVID-19. GASB did actually delay a whole handful of new accounting policies. It seems it's a very rare year that we don't have one. Part of the reason we don't have one is because they said, let's put them on hold, anything that would have been this year, we're putting on hold. So no new accounting policies. As you can see there, we would have potentially implemented, or we would have implemented GASB 84 for fiduciary activities, but that one now is getting delayed, and I'll actually touch on that one again later. Great. John, you can advance this slide, and I believe John is going to talk a little bit now about some financial results.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Yeah, um, so just looking at this first slide here, um, so this chart is essentially showing the general fund operating results, uh, going back for the last five.
Mr. Lorenzini, you're a little hard to hear.
Oh, is this better?
It seems to be better.
All right, I'll try to speak into my microphone here. So, um, you can see here, we've got the, uh, unassigned and assigned fund balance, the expenditures and the revenues of the general fund for the last five years on this graph here. So in 2019, uh, revenues, total revenues in the general fund came in about 1.9 million or about 4.4% over budget. Uh, this can be attributed to licenses and permits which were over budget, uh, some higher-than-expected intergovernmental revenues, and charges for services that were over budget. And I believe the charges for services was primarily due to ambulance fees. I think the city has hired a, a new company to help out with that, and, uh, that company was better at billing in a more timely manner and collecting some of those amounts. Looking at the expenditure side, expenditures came in, uh, 36,000 under budget or within a percent. And, uh, so it's great to see that these actual outcomes were, were so close to what you budgeted. Always look to see that when we're looking at our audit clients. Um, so another thing that, um, we like to cover in our audit presentation, uh, just kind of looking at your ending fund balance in the general fund, and then looking at that as a percentage of your expenditures. And, uh, the city's fund balance at the end of the year was, uh, 43% of expenditures. Uh, just looking at last year, it was 47% at the end of 2019. And I also wanted to mention that the city's financial management policies say that the city will strive for an unassigned fund balance that is, uh, between 42 and 47% of the following year's budgeted tax revenue. And at the end of 2019, uh, the city's unassigned fund balance would have represented 51% of, uh, your anticipated 2020 budgeted tax revenue. So you're very close to that range that, um, is covered in your policy. Moving on to this next slide, uh, so this slide is essentially showing the general fund revenues, um, by source, going back for the last five years. And we've added in some percentages in here too, so you can kind of get a sense of, um, the proportion of general fund revenue going back for the last five years. So overall, you can see that, um, things have been very consistent, um, you know, only moving up and down a few percentage points. And overall, uh, general fund revenue was up 709,000 or about 1.6% in 2018. And then looking at the expenditure side in the general fund, uh, same, same approach here, looking at the last five years, except, uh, we're looking at expenditures by department here. And, um, I've got the percentages kind of broken out to the right in case they're a little bit small. So, uh, looking at, uh, overall, general fund expenditures were up 2.2 million from 2018 to 2019, or about 5.5%. And if you look at, uh, 2017 and 2018, uh, you'll notice there, there's kind of a shift between parks and public works. And I believe that was due to, uh, reorganization of the park maintenance division and moving it from public works to parks. So I think that's kind of what's behind that, that shift there, but otherwise, you can see that, uh, as a percentage of expenditures, it's been fairly consistent over the last Turning our attention briefly to the city's enterprise funds. This chart is showing the city's utilities fund operations going back for the last five years. And if you look at the, the graph here, essentially the blue bar is revenue, the red is operating expenses, and the, the purple bar there is operating income before depreciation expense, uh, which is obviously a non-cash expense. The green bar is your depreciation expense, and the, the teal bar there is the operating income after depreciation expense. So if you can kind of imagine that, um, that green depreciation amount makes up the difference between the two, two operating income figures. So when we're looking at enterprise funds, we like to see the, um, the purple bar, uh, essentially be higher than the green bar, um, which means that your operating income is covering depreciation expense. Depreciation expense, you know, is, is a way of trying to represent the deterioration over time of, of infrastructure that will eventually need to be replaced or repaired. So we like to see when the depreciation expense is being covered in the fund. Uh, overall, in the utilities fund, operating revenues decreased, uh, 4% from prior, prior year. And, um, operating expenses increased about 6.6% from prior. Looking next at the golf course fund. Obviously, you can see the, the dip here in, uh, 2017 and 2018, which was from the, uh, the golf course renovation. So looking at 2019, uh, revenues in the golf course fund were up about 143% from prior year. Um, and that's actually about just 4% less than what was budgeted, or about 130,000 less than what was budgeted. And operating expenses were up 87% from prior year, which ended up being about 5% less than budgeted. Uh, so in total, your operating loss in that fund was within 58,000 of what you anticipated in your budget. So, um, even though both revenues and expenses were, were off, your ending results were not that different from budget. Uh, looking next at the liquor fund. So the liquor fund sales decreased by, uh, about less than half of a, a percent from prior year, or about 84,000. And overall, sales were less than budgeted by about 7%. Our operating income in the liquor fund was, uh, 1,144,000, which was about 163,000 less than budgeted. And the liquor fund, um, as I'm sure the council knows, uh, makes an annual transfer out. Uh, this year, that transfer out was 850,000, which was up from 800,000 in 2018. And this transfer is spread out, uh, among a few different funds. Um, it helps subsidize the general fund, arena, the art center, and Centennial Lakes. So it's, uh, it's great to see the liquor fund supporting those, uh, those other departments in the city. And we also, um, put together a, a graph here, just looking at the liquor fund and the gross profit percentage from sales. And, um, Edina is going to be the, the blue line on this graph here. So you can see that the gross profit percentage was up from 2018 to 2019 slightly, and, um, it was up 30.3% in 2019. And just, just as a little bit of comparison, we also, um, like to put some averages on here from the seven county metro area. And, um, so you can see that's the red line there, you can see that the city slightly above the seven county metro area average for gross profit percentages. And, um, obviously, the most recent data from that we have is 2018, as the, the 2019 data is not available yet. I'm going to turn it back to Michelle, and she's going to go over just a few more slides here.
All right, thanks, Mr. Lorenzini.
All right, thanks, John. I just have a couple of slides left, uh, to conclude here. Um, we did have just a couple more financial slides where you can kind of get a comparison of, of your city against more statewide data. I'm here again, similar to the liquor, the most recent statewide information we have is 2018. Um, for, of course, for Edina, we have the last three years. And what this is showing is your revenue per capita broken out, and this is for governmental funds, so all of your governmental funds, not enterprise funds, but this is general fund and any other, you know, debt service, capital projects fund. So we're looking here at, um, you know, and the statewide is for cities between 20,000 and 100,000 in population. Um, of course, you fall kind of right in the middle of that. So you can see where you fall for your revenue per capita for all these categories. Um, certainly in total, especially if we're looking at 2018 to compare, um, Edina is, is quite a bit, you know, 25% higher than the statewide average. You can see that there is where they really stick out is certainly property taxes is a big one, uh, licenses and permits is another big one, where that revenue per capita is much higher than statewide. Um, same, you know, intergovernmental revenues is about the only category you're less than, um, and we broke out certainly local government aids, since you don't get that, to kind of break, that's broken out to show, um, we know that, but, so you're pretty close even on that, but really, all those other areas, definitely higher per capita than statewide average. John, can you advance this slide, please? Oh, it is, okay. Uh, and now just the same exact slide, but expenditures per capita. So again, looking at last three years for Edina and then statewide average for 2018, um, here, which is to be expected because you're quite a bit higher in revenue per capita. Um, also, a little bit higher, but not quite as much in expenditures per capita. Um, you can see kind of the, mostly in police, uh, and fire and public safety are kind of the, or police, fire and public works, excuse me, um, are certainly the categories where you can see that there, uh, you, um, outspend, outspend the statewide average, but as we noted, above, uh, revenue per capita is higher than the statewide average as well. Um, and just a couple of last items, um, I know, you know, Steve kind of alluded to this as well, uh, but the financial statements, uh, will be submitted to the state, uh, the deadline is June 30th, they, they have been issued, now those are going to be submitted to the state to meet that deadline. Um, and for the past, uh, many years, the city has submitted that CAFR, uh, as well to GFOWA, which also has a deadline of June 30th. And submitting that CAFR is what gets that certificate, um, for excellence in financial reporting. Uh, the full CAFR, that comprehensive annual financial report, is not required by the state. Uh, there's a few sections in there, stats, tables, the transmitter letter, that the city does not have to prepare, uh, but they choose to prepare that more robust document, submit it for the award to kind of, um, you know, make it even more comprehensive, more transparent, give even more information out to the public. So it's not a requirement of the state, it's something the city is choosing to do to complete that, um, extra kind of longer document to add more information. And, and then the last couple, real quick, I mentioned no new GASB standards this year, which is unusual. Uh, we will have two coming up, uh, one, and they were both pushed off again because of the COVID-19. The next one is effective for 2020, and that one might change, and it's tested with your fiduciary activities, which right now, you have an agency fund that consists of like police, uh, seizure, public safety training facility. So it just has to do with reassessing how that is reported and making sure that those are still being reported correctly. It kind of changes some of the rules of how those are shown, so, um, might real, impact might not have much of an impact. Um, and then leases is coming down the chute, but not till 2022 now, since they pushed that one off as well. And that, um, is about all we have for you. Thank you so much for inviting us to come present virtually to you all, and if anyone has any questions, please definitely let us know.
Does anyone on the council have a question for either Ms. Hoffman or Mr. Lorenzini? Well, welcome to Edina, we thank you for your good work and, um, that report out. And, uh, we've got an excellent financial department, as you, as you noted in your report, some differences of opinion on a couple of things apparently, but, uh, nothing that rises to a significant level, and I think it's also recognized by our rating agencies, which gave us a double, triple A bond rating just recently, um, on the verge of borrowing 5.2 million. So, um, we need a motion from someone on the council accepting the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report as prepared by CLA. Your motion, does that affect? So, motion by Member Fisher. There's a second?
Second.
Second by Member Brindle, that we accept the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report, uh, excuse me, prepared by Clifton, uh, Larson Allen. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi.
The, uh, motion's approved, the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report prepared by Clifton Larson Allen is received. Thank you. And next, we are going to talk, uh, about something that we've looked at from time to time in the past, and that is a concept for improved service and safety of the city hall reception area, and Chad Milner, our director of engineering, has this matter, and I think Bruce Schwartzman's here from BKV to, uh, assist us in this conversation.
Rick, there. Sharing my screen now, so yes, we want to discuss the concept for improved service, safety of the city hall reception area. Just want to remind the council about the space needs study we completed last year. Uh, there's a reminder of the work session information we presented in February, seems like more than just a few months ago. Uh, share the goals of city hall, and then really get into that concept that BKV has put together, and share the schedule. So if you recall, the space needs study had a concept, um, showing the front reception area pushed out closer to the front door to improve safety, uh, and security and provide better service really for our customers. And then it had some other amenities with moving conference rooms, oops, sorry about that, moving some conference rooms up near the, uh, on, down onto the first floor, uh, because we have some concern with safety with the community room. Just reminding you of, of that concept. So at the February 19th work session, we really focused on that customer service, customer safety, and to have safety. Well, since then, we have a new thing to kind of plan for, and that's the COVID-19 preparedness plan and, and future preparedness. We had our police department do some initial assessments and initial recommendations for that space needs plan. And it really focused on three areas, safety hazards with accidents, weather, verbal and physical threats to employees, public or infrastructure, then the cyber threats, so data breaches and those sort of things. So it's really a focus on the safety and security of people, infrastructure, and data. And these were the eight goals we presented at that work session, I won't get into all eight of these, but we'll focus on, kind of, two of them with this reception area concept. So it was really try to provide a safe and secure facility for the public and staff, and that positive public experience. So we do have Bruce, Bruce Schwartzman with BKV Group with us tonight, and he's going to share the concept. BKV Group was the original architect for city hall, and we really want to make sure we match the existing architectural elements within that area, and then ensure that that space needs study, that we're not doing anything that's going to stop us from making further improvements to city hall based on that study. So we just want to take this first step with the reception area, and I'll hand it over to Bruce, and I'll run the slides, and we'll hear from Bruce.
Excellent, thank you, Chad.
Thank you, Director Milner. Mr. Schwartzman, welcome. Thanks for being back after all these years.
It, it, um, I tell you, your city hall has got to be one of the primary buildings that our company is proud of. Um, we always look back at the quality of it, I always enjoy visiting it, and literally, even though we've, in our 43-year history, we've done a lot of facilities, honestly, the Edina City Hall to us is a beautiful, beautiful facility, and we're, we're glad just to be part of this, to help you and continue on its journey. Uh, I'm a senior partner with the, with the company, and as Chad mentioned, we were the original design architects on it, so we do value the opportunity to try to continue the aesthetic appeal and, and vision that the building initially had when it was initially designed. We've been looking at a, a, building on what HGA did, uh, and kind of looking at how to implement that and how to maintain the aesthetics of the building, and so what we've started to do, and we met with Chad and Derek and a number of the staff, and we reviewed the concept, we reviewed the idea, and the idea of a, a open reception desk, as well as a, a more secured reception as well as a more secured reception desk with ballistic material, how to provide some level of security and safety within that station. So the plan that you see in front of you is sliding that reception desk, actually building a new one. I don't want to give the misimpression that we're basically just going to pick it up and slide it over. We're really going to construct a new reception desk in a more prominent location that is adjacent to the stair. So when people come in, they're really greeted directly. Now, there are some things that we still need to build into it, because currently there's a monitor, there's pamphlets, there's a lot of material that kind of blocks the view in that area. Well, we're looking at relocating the monitor. You can see that up near the council chambers. We're still looking at where that, where that potentially goes. But the goal was to still create a spacious lobby that's not impeding on people's circulation and movement and creating cramped space, but really locating it in a prime location. So what the main focus of this plan exercise was appropriate location and then size of work area to accommodate one or more folks that might be at the reception counter as well as a public information terminal for people to do some research or gather some information onto the side as well. So we've incorporated that. We're showing the idea of a glass storefront wall that goes around this, the desk with an access door to the east side of that area underneath the stair. And there's more than enough headroom for it to go under the stairs as it's shown. The idea is that this is not a structure that goes all the way up to the ceiling above. It really floats at about eight foot high. There's a horizontal datum line. If you looked at where the bathrooms are currently at about eight feet, which we're maintaining that line and that height proportion so that there's a rhythm and balance as to why things are occurring. The other component to the, and we are early, I should tell the council and mayor. We're early in the process. This is a concept plan. Chad wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are with the concept design. The goal would be to really further develop this, develop the, the exact detailing and information that goes into that new counter. Again, we're going to use materials that, that respect and replicate what's there now. So we're not looking at adding anything foreign. The other component that we're looking at is, as you know, there's been some concern about how do you secure off the offices on the first and second floor. So this plan shows the idea of that, that off to the right where it says new aluminum storefront and new secured door. The idea that is the public cannot just wander back through that hallway. Staff would either have to come and get them or the potential that reception desk could buzz that door and allow somebody to come back there as well. So again, it's, it's placing the same dark bronze aluminum frame system in, you know, similar to what's in there now. Placing it between the columns where it's purposeful and meaningful. And again, it doesn't go all the way up to structure. What it does is floats down at that eight foot height. Floating it down at the eight foot height provides the security, but it also minimizes impact to the sprinkler system, minimizes impact to the mechanical system, but, but does make something that would be complementary to what's going on in the space. You'll also notice that, if you go back one second, Chad, you, go back to, thank you very much. So off to the furthest right in the exterior courtyard, between where the stair exits out, there's a new exit door identified there. Because of the amount of people in the council chambers, because of the amount of people that it would be in the lobby, the code requires two exits from that space. Well, currently your two exits are the front door where everybody comes in or to go down the hallway towards the east down out the exit door to the back. A new door would have to be installed in that one exterior wall to make this a code compliant space and still secure off staff space. The next plan that we're looking at, that we'll go into, there's ways to minimize the need for that door. And that's part of the question too, because if the council thinks that in the next year or so, you are going to do the remodeling of the Parks and Rec space, the Assessor space to, to be that large, have those large meeting spaces, then, then it really should be talked about a little bit more to minimize potential costs that you'd just be having to correct in the future. This option moved that door to the secured offices and to secure off the offices back some. But I, I think, to tell you the truth, I would potentially even move it back further. Because right now, Parks and Rec door, the entrance to Parks and Rec would now be in the public area. Now, could that be secured? Yes, it could be locked off. The door could be modified to be a buzzer. It could be secured in a way to secure their offices. But again, part of where you put that glass wall, that new security door wall has to do with if and when you might be doing those back conferences or those remodeling of those office areas. A preferred location is if you see off to the right, Chad, if you could take your cursor right, keep going where that column is, right? There's a little right there. That would actually be a preferred location to put the, the new door. That would actually be in a logical location. There's an existing column there that we could tie into. And now it does leave the Assessor and the finance, or I'm sorry, Parks and Rec doors in the public. And again, we'd have to look at securing them. But if it was located there, that would be planning for the long term of how you might remodel the space. But again, it, it, step A is contingent on step B to some extent. When you go to the second level, the, the most efficient way to secure off the second level offices and minimize impact to the entire building is to construct another kind of floating glass wall with a secured door across there. It does, you still have accessibility. You have the stair as well as the elevator that gets you up to that landing area. You have space there that chairs can be located to create a small seating area for anywhere from four to five people or so, maybe even six, depending upon how it's laid out. And again, it would be the kind of thing where that's a secured door. There'd be card access. Staff could come out and greet the individuals that might be coming to their office, but it does provide security so that public can't just wander back through some of the staff areas. And I do want to say, we, we do work all over the state as well as the country. Because since we did your facility, we now have offices in four other states in the country. And we are doing a lot of this retrofit and security type work that we are seeing around the country. It's, it's, it's just a security aspect. This is not, of course, a final rendering. What this is, is more of a massing diagram. So this gives you a perspective, it gives you a general feel for where the, for where the reception desk is. You can see this, this kind of gentle curve form that identifies the reception desk. Again, it's not detailed. We'll develop that as we go. But you can see there's a small glass kind of height, you know, almost, almost like a sneeze guard between the public and, and the reception counter. That provides another level of security. If there ever was a threat, and that's about at a, I think, a five foot high height, maybe. We might even talk about six foot. I'm not sure if this represents that. It would provide security for a period of time if there was a potential threat. But then you can see where that is. And then, you know, again, the glass security wall that we talked about installing, the door is almost shown like it's solid. That would be glass as well. The idea is to create a, really a floating glass element that complements the space and doesn't detract from it. So it's not an overly complicated concept. It, it does respect the current design and kind of works with the materials and the balances of what's there now.
Then I'll just touch on the, on the schedule here a little bit, and then we can open it up for questions. So we're hoping to get some feedback tonight. We get positive feedback, we'd like to continue this into final design and bidding for this year, a 2020 project. We'd like to complete that construction this year if possible. So with that, I think I'll leave it with the concept here and have it open for questions either between Bruce or myself. And then I'll stop sharing here in a few, few seconds.
Okay. Thank you, Director Milner. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Schwartzman?
I do.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. Looking at this reception desk with an eye toward being safe in a COVID environment, it makes me think that that glass should be higher so that if someone is at the reception desk and needing to communicate, I guess I'd like to see two things. Consideration of how to protect the people who are working in there from, from the spray of someone speaking, but also then some sort of delineation to where the visitor should stand. So in other words, the visitor isn't going to walk all the way up to this desk in a COVID environment. The kid, the visitor is going to be back a good five to six feet. So somehow we need to delineate that and protect the people who are working in there.
Good comments. And you're, you're right, there's absolutely, in this new paradigm we're working. I'd like to think it's an interim step. It's not a permanent situation, but you're right, it should be at least thought about for the next year.
Well, and we're, we're looking at COVID having a resurgence in Texas right now. So I, I, you know, I don't see it as something that is going to go away. I, I think that we, we do need to take that, that step while we're doing this.
Sounds good. We'll make sure we incorporate that.
Are there observations or comments by council members for Mr. Schwartzman? Can you talk a little bit, Mr. Schwartzman, about the security involved with the staircase? It seems like you still, we still have that open staircase.
Yeah.
Maybe when I'm going upstairs, I often lean over the rail to say hi to the receptionist. And so what's to preclude somebody from just walking up the stairs and jumping into that space? Or shooting down into the space, for example?
You're absolutely right, Mayor. It's, it's, we do a lot of security assessments and it's that evaluation of the level of risk and what you think, to what level you take security, what you think the level of risk might be. We try to do something that respects the space, but still is an appropriate level of security, allowing somebody that's at that reception desk, if there was a threat, to duck down, hit a security address button. You can do the what ifs, you can do the, the extreme. We tried to hold the, the reception area, especially at the front area, away from the stairs so it's not directly adjacent. There's a gap of a couple of feet that separates the railing system to the side of the reception desk. But you're right, could somebody go up the stair and potentially do some other damage if, if they wanted to? I think that is a possibility. We did look at the idea of a glass railing system or something. The, the only way, you're either putting a lid on this space, which in, when we, when we did some conceptual planning, it really became fortress-like. And I, I don't, I don't think that's something to see once, maybe I'm wrong, but it, putting, putting a lid on it and enclosing it really did feel like this was this fortress appearance. We were concerned about the railing system. We did look at the idea of modifying the railing system, but it seemed like such a drastic change from what was there. We were concerned that is that really, is it, is it damaging the aesthetic appeal of the space for a very remote kind of possibility? And we did, I, I forgot which police officer joined us when we were going through this, but we talked to him about the likelihood and the probability of it. And it seemed in the discussion, and in our opinion, this approach provides additional protection and security. It's not, it's not to that level that it's fortress-like. So we can look at it. If the mayor and the, and the council want to, want to see the more enclosed bubble, if they want to, if you would all like to see a modified hand railing system and what that impact would be, we'd be glad to study that. But we, we didn't go there based on the preliminary analysis we did.
Yeah, I, I see the, the balance point to trying to, yeah, it's really, it's really difficult. So I think you're heading in a good direction.
Mr. Mayor.
Member, member Fisher?
Yeah, and, and I would say, you know, the whole point of these security systems is to, in effect, slow someone down from trying to do harm. Most situations, they're not, and again, you're trying to plan for every kind of sequence, but most people aren't upset at the receptionist. Most people are upset at somebody in a department behind. And as long as we have those barriers, I think that's, that's the most critical thing. And the, the ability for the receptionist to have a route behind, which they would have in this case. And, and we have the added benefit, of course, of our police right on the other side of that wall. So again, it's that, it's a matter of just slowing people down enough to get help there. My question is, and, and I agree, you have to find that balance. If we tried to create a barrier on that stairwell, it's a whole different game in terms of what this building feels and looks like. And then we have to just sort of question what's, you know, what are we trying to do here? My, I was trying to understand, as you were going through the, the various plan elements, ultimately, we're saying long-term, we, we agree with, I think you said you'd agree with the master plan that we would ultimately bring meeting rooms up front. We would have a lobby back there. Exactly how the configuration happens, it's really a matter of which sequencing we decide and how quickly we decide to do that. So I guess I would defer to, as, as, you know, we get into that planning a little further, that, you know, unless other council members have an idea of how quickly we'd want to jump into remodeling City Hall, that, you know, you pick the most efficient things for today and stay there. But overall, I think the concept works.
And Councilman, I should, I should point out, part of the reason that we were saying that is if, if you looked at that plan that was done showing the conference rooms, that secondary exit door that we said we needed to add, we don't need to add if those conference rooms are built, because it creates a hallway that connects to the stairway on the north. So there's, there's already something there that provides the repaired exit. So there is a potential little bit of cost savings by doing that concept.
Right. But if you had that exit there, I mean, you could lock it or something in the future and it wouldn't be. In the scheme of things, it's not a, not a huge added expense.
$15,000, $16,000, somewhere in there. That's max.
I think, Member Anderson, did you have a comment?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Member Staunton, anything at this time?
Nothing from me.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Schwartzman, thanks for being with us. But, you know, it seems like City Hall looks better every year. Really an amazing thing. If you can figure out how to keep that copper from leaching down onto the stone, let us know, will you?
That's the, that's the one beauty of it all, I guess. Anyway, council, mayor, this was a pleasure. I'd be glad and look forward to talking to you all again in the future. Good evening.
Yeah, I'm passing along, we get a lot of compliments on City Hall, so I'm passing them on to you and the rest of your BKV team.
And we'll let everybody know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right. That completes that portion of our agenda this evening. And we are going to move on now to the public hearing portion of the agenda. And the first matter in front of us this evening is on, is the Resolution 2020-60, which is a proposed variance, and it's a variance appeal matter for 4248 Alden Drive. And again, I remind folks that are on the call that when we, when we finish this matter this evening, we're going to leave the public hearing open until noon on July 15th so that you can continue to provide input. And then we'll deal with this as a council at our July 21st meeting. We don't have a meeting right around the 4th of July. So I think Ms. Acker has this matter. And Member Brindle, will you cover for me for a minute here? I'm gonna, I gotta step out here a minute.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anytime, Chris. Thank you. So, Mayor, members of the City Council, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval for a front yard setback variance to the required front yard setback along Morningside Road for 4248 Alden. This item was heard and approved by a four to three vote of the Planning Commission at their May 13th, 2020 meeting. So the subject property is a corner lot. It is along Alden and Morningside. The existing home fronts and faces Alden Drive. And the garage attached behind the house. the garage attached behind the house, and it had a driveway that attacked it to Morningside Road. The existing home is non-conforming in two respects. The setback along the north side is 3.3 feet. The setback along the south side is 10.2 feet. The minimum north side yard setback should be five feet. And the, because it's a corner lot and there are homes fronting both streets, the house is subjected to two front yard setbacks. The home would have to maintain the front yard setback along Alden Drive as well as along Morningside Road. The proposal is to remove the home and to rebuild on the site. This is the existing home, as you see it, fronting Alden. This is the proposed home. It will be reoriented, so the new home will be facing south towards Morningside Road. The garage will be fronting and facing Alden Drive, so now the driveway will be connected to Alden, to the east lot line. The house meets all of the ordinance requirements in terms of setback, coverage, first floor elevation, overall height, with the exception of the setback to the south lot lines along Morningside Road. They've increased the setback along the north lot line, so the house does meet the minimum ordinance requirement. It's actually further away than the minimum of five feet. It's about 6.8 feet away from the north lot line. They've also moved the home back, it's further back from Alden Drive than the minimum front yard setback that would be required, about 23 feet further back from Alden, where the new garage now loading off of Alden faces. This is a, an example of the buildable area of the lot, given the required setbacks. It's about a 15-foot wide footprint, and that is based on the setback of the home that's directly adjacent to the west. If you were to line up the front yard setback along Morningside Road based upon that house, then the buildable area would be about this red hatched area. So these are the elevations of the new home. The south elevation of the home shows the new front door facing Morningside Road. This is the element that would be the closest to the south lot line at the 11.2 feet instead of the 10.2 that is currently the setback of the non-conforming house that's there now. This, the lower right side elevation is facing Alden, would be a garage that would be facing Alden with the driveway now loading off of Alden. And then the left side, which would be towards the west, this would be the elevation for that. And then the rear elevation or north elevation of the house, where they've increased the setback to conform, actually to be further away than just conforming to the ordinance requirements. Here are some renderings in, within the Alden view. The garage will actually be further back, about 23 feet further back than the front face of the adjacent home. And then this is the view of the south elevation of the home. It also includes that house that's directly adjacent to the west. It's a newer home. A little bit closer view, the house does set up the grade, there is a great difference between where the road is, also where the sidewalk is, the house is elevated. And then sort of a corner view of both the garage and the front face of the home. And another view of that. This was done by a staff member showing the setbacks that are along Morningside Road on some of the corner lots. They vary between six feet, 16 feet, 29.8, 22 feet, 13 feet, 16.1. So there's a very mixed bag of setbacks along Morningside on the corner lots and also some of the homes that are fronting it. So at their May 13th, 2020 meeting, the Planning Commission approved the request by a four-three vote. We have the representative of those that are appealing the request, there were more than one appellant to the request. There was a number of neighbors that joined the appeal. Andy Warner is present, who will be doing a presentation. And then also, we have Ellie Jelcing and Shane Jensen, who are the property owners who are building the house. They are also present. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Ms. Acker at this point in time?
I have one, Your Honor.
Yes, thank you. Member Staunton?
Chris, when you take into account 4114 and average the setback between 4114 and 4110, what does that do to the building envelope for 4248?
Yes, that, and we'd have to confirm what the actual setback is. I believe on the graphic, it indicated that it was about 16 feet. So that would change the width of the proposed buildable opportunity to 22 feet, approximately from 15 to 22 feet.
So it could come a little bit closer to Morningside Road and still come by?
From a, yes, from, from what the numbers are showing, it, it wouldn't solve the problem in terms of requiring a variance for the, the submission that's been approved by the Planning Commission.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Acker? All right, well, let's go to the, to the appellant. And I understand, is it Andy Warner?
That is correct. Can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Warner. And did you visit with Ms. Acker? I've got a notation here from staff that you were told you'd have 10 minutes to make your appeal.
And I will endeavor to fit within that envelope for you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner.
Let me tell you, if, let me, please confirm if you can see.
Before you start, would you give us your full name and address too, please, when you get all ready to go?
Sure, I've got, that's actually on the first slide I've got. So I'm Andy Warner. I've been Dyna resident since 1992, and my, our home faces the lot in question across Morningside Road. We live at 4107. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to present information to the city on behalf of many neighborhood residents. I want to state, there is an acceptance in the neighborhood that this lot will see a new build when sold, and that a variance of some form may be needed, simply due to the dynamics of work with a corner lot. There's equally broad neighborhood consensus that it should not be this variance. And just one last note, I want to check that the slides are fully visible to the council. Can everyone see the marks in each corner of this slide?
Yes, Mr. Warner.
Fantastic, thank you. So first, the basis for the appeal. Basis for our appeal is not that we simply disagree with the Planning Commission recommendation, though that's undoubtedly true. We feel that the modified virtual meeting process used for the Planning Commission led to a flawed ruling, and that the closure of City Hall due to COVID-19 has limited the ability of the community to engage constructively with city staff and our elected officials. We also feel that the developer, developer submission contained inaccurate and potentially misleading information that was unchallenged during the process. And in fact, you just, you know, a certain amount of that was simply just repeated just now. So the shortcomings for the virtual meeting, we feel there's a number of meetings here. There's an imbalance between the WebEx and telephone participation, which in that particular case resulted in discussion that we felt was heavily tilted in the developer's favor. During the introduction, attendees, as in this meeting, where attendees assured that already submitted written comments were given equal weight to in-person submissions, and it was unnecessary and even discouraged to use dial-in access to simply repeat written comments. However, this is not what the community experienced in practice. For example, multiple written comments referenced the modified driveway location. However, a commissioner didn't think of this subject was, think this subject was a concern to the community. I will point out that staff did attempt to correct this misapprehension. Numerous written community comments were submitted about the impact of massing on Morningside Road, yet only one commissioner seemed to acknowledge this. And lastly, there was a series of close votes to determine the outcome. The precise nature of the votes appeared to be confusing at times. What exactly did an "aye" or an "aye" mean at that particular vote? And frankly, some of the votes seemed to be inconsistent, and the final vote appeared to be made more out of exasperation as much as anything. I encourage council members to watch the recording if you've not already. In the limited time I have available, I'd like to highlight two areas we believe the developer's submission was inaccurate or misleading. And first, and this occurred against just now, in my regard as a minor detail, but in these matters, accuracy is important. According to the county records, Carrie Franklin is still the legal property owner. It's entirely possible that the people that will follow me are under contract for the new home, but they're not the owners of record, as has been asserted multiple times, including just now. Secondly, there was an attempt to portray this as a problem lot that demanded a large variance by falsely limiting the buildable area. And again, I think you just heard that. It was clearly used to great effect, as the city staff had just repeated this assertion during both the commission meeting and just now. So let's look at this buildable area definition. This is the original graphic that you just saw. It suggests that this is a problem lot, and you can only build a home 15 feet deep. And I think Councilman Staunton already asked the next question, which is, if you consider 4110 and 1414 Morningside, what's the buildable area? Turns out, you need a setback of about 20.9 feet here, because the, you know, the bulk of the house at 4014 is 16 feet back from the street, but there's a portion of it that's covered, that's 12 feet back from the street. And let's look at the next standard, which would be in, if no other, if, if, if no other setback applied, the standard 15-foot setback would, would apply for this. But however, the developer decided that even this was not enough, and the variance requested a front yard setback of 11.2 feet. By planting the idea that this is a problem lot, the developer sidestepped almost all the serious discussion in the Planning Commission meeting about the exact nature of the variance required. So we're familiar, variance process requires, is required to meet all four of these conditions in order to be granted. We'll address these. So the first two conditions are to relieve practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance and that the use is reasonable. And the second is to correct extraordinary circumstances applicable to this property, but not applicable to other property in the vicinity or zoning district. And the developer's responses to these two conditions was basically the same, based on the false premise that you can only build 15 feet deep without variance, and that the existing structure was only 10.2 feet from the property line. In truth, only a portion of the existing structure is 10.2 feet from the property line. When the structure was built in 1914, Morningside Road was a winding dirt track, as shown in this image from around 1917, with the existing house circled in red. The proposed structure is 86 feet wide, is taller, and will be only one foot further from the property line, which is somehow presented in the submission as a concession. The community does not feel this is reasonable. During the Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners, one of the commissioners specifically asked about simply obeying the 15-foot standard minimum setback as a means of addressing massing on Morningside Road. The developer's response is this would force him to make the house wider, effectively making the problem worse, not better, as if 25% pad size was an entitlement, not a maximum that may be subject to other limits. The neighborhood position is this particular variance is driven solely by the house specifications and design, and not by any extraordinary circumstances or practical difficulties as required by the ordinances and statutes. The third condition is that the variance be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. The developer's response to this basically repeats the flawed logic of responses one and two with the added misdirection of incorrect property ownership. The fourth condition of the variance is not that it not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood roundly rejects the assertion that the new structure would be in harmony or complement the neighborhood. This is a graphic based on the plans provided, to which the height above the sidewalk and a 5'10" person have been added, carefully preserving the scale. This contrasts starkly with the illustrative drawings from the submission, which were just shown to the council, which employ warped perspectives to downplay the visual impact. The photo on the right clearly shows the section of the existing property that is 10.2 feet from the property line. Imagine the impact of that 86 feet of new construction, just one foot further back from the sidewalk, will have on the essential character of Morningside Road. There is only one permanent structure on Morningside between France and Wooddale Avenues, including all of the new construction that will be closer to the sidewalk than this proposed home, and that's the detached garage at 4400 Morningside that dates from 1918. So while not the immediate topic of the variance request, the driveway reconfiguration raised concerns from both the community and the Planning Commission.
There are two minutes remaining.
Thank you. These concerns were twofold. The proximity to a junction or stop sign that is busy at school times, and aesthetic concerns about both the facade of garage doors facing the street, and the driveway that rises over six feet from the sidewalk and is 24 feet wide at the apex. This would significantly impact the essential character of Alden Drive. So in conclusion, hopefully ahead of time here, apart from the direct input, the impact that the neighborhood feels this variance would cause, every granted variance has the potential to set a new precedent. If granted, this variance will establish a new limit to be pushed against by developers, further eroding the essential nature of the neighborhood. Lastly, the map shown here highlights the location of the property, as well as local residents that have expressed concern to the variance. So I just want to thank the council for their time, consideration, and for the opportunity to present this case.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Is there anyone else who wishes to participate in the appeal? In support of Mr. Warner, or the position taken by Mr. Warner?
I don't believe there's anyone on the WebEx who's going to do that. I believe there may be dial-in people. I think we've already heard there are people on the phone waiting to talk. But I, I believe I'm the only person that was granted the WebEx privileges.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warner. And then Ms. Acker, I think you said there was a presentation by the homeowners, the property owners, or the prospective property owners. Mr. Warner is correct, maybe they have a conditional purchase agreement. Ellie Jelcing and Shane Jensen, are they here?
Yes, we are here.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Yes, I can also see you. So
Wonderful.
Oh, Mr. Warner, can you clear your screen?
Done.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and jump in here then. My name is Shane Jensen. I live at 5144 Vincent Avenue South in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Really appreciate everyone having us here. Really appreciate all of the comments and thoughts and time that went into this by both staff as well as the neighbors. We really appreciate everyone helping us along this process, and we hope to join the neighborhood. And we'll jump in here. We're going to walk through really quickly who we are, our family, our partner in this project and our plan, talk quickly about the challenges that we have with the property and the characterization of those and what they kind of lead to, as well as things that we're doing to address and mitigate the raised concerns that we've had, both through Better Together at Dyna as well as through the Planning Commission meeting. So we're a family of four, we're quite a large family. We've outgrown our home in a Dyna. We're excited to join the community, potentially, and appreciate you guys taking the time to chat with us. We have been surrounded by tear downs ourselves. I think four out of the six properties around us are, have been tear downs in the last few years, so we appreciate it and understand the challenges. Our neighbors directly next door had some challenges, so we're very understanding. And we've been trying to think of our neighbors, both to the north and to the west especially, as we've been considering our plans. Our partner on this project is C. Allen Homes. They've done some other work in the neighborhood. They have over three decades of experience. Um, they have over three decades of experience. They're a small, hardworking, um, very customer service focused builder. Uh, they currently have six houses in Edina, and they also have completed several homes in the area. Um, and they're a minority owned firm as well, which we really greatly support. Um, and we'll, and then a little bit about our plan. Um, obviously we love Morningside for so many different reasons. We don't want to do anything to interrupt the neighborhood. Um, we have a large active family. We, you know, we have four kids, but we make them bunk, um, bunk up. So we feel like we actually have pretty average needs, um, compared to most families that are moving into Edina. Uh, as well as, um, we'd also like to be able to accommodate our aging parents um, with a main floor bedroom, also some terms around COVID long-term and long-term care facilities. We would like to have that option in our home. Um, under, we are under contract currently, um, for the property dependent contingent upon the variance. Um, Mr. Franklin has signed off and approved, uh, the application. Um, so that, uh, concern has been taken care of. We've been thoughtfully planning this project for six months now. You've probably seen, you know, now that I've been home every day for three months, I've been walking around the neighborhood pretty much every day. So I definitely know my lay of the land over there. Um, we're considering different, several different alternatives for the site. Um, and we also revised our original submission based on feedback that we received on Better Together Edina, um, which helped us make a plan that, um, worked better with the neighborhood. There are four unique things that we believe are really working together to, in a confluence to make this, uh, project a challenge. Uh, one is the setback on both the east side and the south side of the property, um, creating complications due to the variability of the, the homes that are on that north side of Morningside in general, uh, not just on our block, um, down the entire block. Uh, the lot elevation is, uh, quite a bit above the grade as the previous opponent discussed, uh, which creates challenges in the garage location and the design, all working together with this tension to try to figure out the, the, the almost obvious length versus width to make a livable home. Um, and the, another option or a problem is the, just the corner lot, um, and the additional requirements. It's very exposed. We appreciate that the neighbors are, there's a lot of different neighbors that can see this property and it's really important to them and we really appreciate that. Um, and those are the challenges with the driveway location, uh, which we'll get to further, but, um, one of the things that can't be seen is the, you know, and very obviously in the plans is you need to be 50 feet from the corner, um, which is, uh, really challenging when you have a very steep entry. Um, and so that creates all sorts of things. So really, when you think about when you're planning the home and how it's all going to come together, these, these, these four things work together to make the lot extremely challenging. Um, and that's why it's been on the market for two and a half years and we sort of took a chance, um, and came up with the plan, um, the one that we think is, is actual. This is the view looking north towards the property. Um, and we just wanted to mention that, you know, this is something that we would definitely want to have a view of too. This is pretty atypical for Morningside and this is what people I think are, you know, a great deal worried about losing. Um, and we hope to do as much as we can with landscaping to, you know, kind of, you know, really get back to over the years to something that, that is more manicured, but, uh, you know, also is softens things up and it really makes it approachable from, from this angle. Uh, we want to address four concerns really quickly. Um, one, that the house is too close to, um, too close to the road, the Morningside setback, and the real challenge is the extreme variation that we have with this plan. And the mix of, if you look at what's going on in the neighborhood, the lot size and north, south orientations versus east-west orientation really makes it difficult. So things that we considered, uh, we increased the setback both on the north side and the south side in our plan. Uh, we set back, uh, the setback is similar or within a couple of feet of three of the four homes that are closest to, to us on Morningside. Uh, the house, uh, very much so adjacent, um, to the west is set extremely far back because it is a north, south, uh, smaller lot. Um, and then really with planning the width and the length, it was really a tension between the setback, trying to get the setback to where people would be happy with it and also the massings. Obviously it's a, it's a multiplicative, uh, type of a relationship. And what we've done to mitigate that is we've added additional bushes and trees and doubled our landscaping allowance. Another item that people talk about, the house is too big. The house is, um, the exact same size or a 40 square, within 40 square feet of the neighbor directly to the west. Um, we've done different things like using pitch and gables to ensure that it's not a boxy feeling home. Uh, it's a very average home. As you can see by the items on the, the left-hand side of the screen, we are within, um, a few square feet of the average of all homes that are listed or recently sold in the neighborhood very near us. Um, and it's really the unique circumstance of the corner lot and the elevation that makes this a challenge. Um, additional mitigations, our three season porch on the west side, we have now changed it. So we have all screens on that side. So it's not as intimidating or massing. Um, so that is much more approachable there. We added the front sidewalk and we removed another gable from the center to give it a more easy to approach, uh, view from, from the road. And I just wanted to mention, uh, we did look at what something with less massing would look like. This is a one-story home. This is almost the same footprint as, uh, our house when it comes to the length, but is only a three-bedroom house, um, 25% less. Um, and it is a 54 foot lot. It's currently for sale a few blocks away. Um, and this is taken up just under 40 feet. So if we were to do something like this, this would be, we'd be asking for another 10 feet of additional intrusion into the setback. So one foot variance if we're going to do something like this. Otherwise, you know, if you can kind of imagine taking the whole left side and adding it to the back, you know, that view from Morningside then would be almost like, uh, um, a very, very long awkward structure, almost like a doubled long type of, um, um, structure that people, I think we'd be back here asking for another variance as well. So this, I think, is a home that people are looking for. But given the give and take of where the setbacks are and the size, it really is, um, pretty much impossible. We do want to definitely touch on morning, the garage location on Morningside, given the six 50 foot setback from the corner. Um, this made it especially challenging. That's why we pushed back the driveway so far to the north.
We have about two minutes remaining, two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, we, the current driver location would be extremely steep, almost a 45 degree angle we calculated, which in Minnesota winters would be a bit of a challenge. Uh, as well as the safety concern, uh, the Morningside Road is a local connector during the 44th and France Small Area Plan. The study of traffic indicated 1300 to about 1900 vehicles per day versus Alden at 400 to 600. Um, and really within the living streets plan, that local street designation is for improving quality of life. And we feel like that safety being the primary concern is really important. Um, and so we did that, uh, but we did limit it to eight feet on that side. I don't think the renting really does it justice as it'll be concrete, be less, much less assuming they'll be, uh, landscaping there to really block the entry. And I think we, we did other things like try to keep the original staircase to make the, the character of the, of the area stay in the corner, stay very similar to what it is today. Um, in terms of maintaining character, uh, we actually use this, this home a couple of blocks away and use the same colors, battenboard siding, and very similar to, to all the homes in the area, um, that are, have been built in the last 10 years. So we use this as sort of a, an example here on Scott Terrace, which is a block away. Um, and we just wanted to mention that we live, um, six minutes away. We're going to be here for our neighbors throughout this process. Uh, this isn't the first time I've built a home. I know it's like you have to be there every day. You have to talk to your neighbors constantly, take pictures, ask, answer questions, things like that. Um, I think that keeping the driveway on the east keeps a lot of the excavations that are necessary away, unnecessary away from the neighbors to the east as well as the garage to the north. Um, and so that's another reason for that, uh, to protect our neighbors as well.
Thirty seconds.
All right. Within, uh, within this, we really have all those practical difficulties working together, those sort of four. You can't really analyze each one individually. They all need to sort of be taken together as one factor. And we were able to do that as well as follow all of the other zoning requirements for the, for the home. This is a really beautiful lot, yet it's been over 2.5 years, um, on the market in a great location. This is a really challenging lot. Um, it's a little scary to spend tens of thousands of dollars to try to get here today with the design and the plan. Um, but we really thank everybody for their input and we hope to, um, get approval from everyone, move forward, working with our neighbors, um, and enjoy our life in Edina. So I really appreciate you, everyone, taking your, the, the time today. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Uh, Mr. Warner, are you still on the line? Okay, Mr. Jensen and Mr. Warner, would you both like to make your PowerPoint presentations part of the record in this proceeding?
I would be more than happy to do so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for doing that, both of you. Uh, does anyone in the council have a question for you, Mr. Warner or Mr. Jensen? Okay, this is a public hearing matter. And, um, before we get into the public hearing, I just want to let people know again that we're going to hear from residents who want to provide testimony in the matter. The number you want to call is 800-374-0221. It sounds like we've already got some folks on the line. I think Mr. Warner indicated as much as well. Uh, conference ID number 8967019, for those of you who haven't called in yet. You remember the operator will ask for your name and street address and you'll be put in the queue to speak. And then you'll have three minutes to speak and Manager Neil will gently let you know when you're at the three-minute mark. So, um, and also recall that we're going to leave the, uh, matter open until noon on July 15th. So you can call, you can voicemail or you can do something in writing at bettertogetheredina.org until noon on July 15th. So, uh, is there, uh, are there folks in the queue, Ms. Benarott, that can open this matter now, up now for public testimony?
Yes, sir. Our first caller tonight is Erin Scott. Operator, will you please unmute Erin's line? Erin, please begin by stating your full name and address, including apartment, condo or suite number.
Line is now open.
Thank you. Erin Scott, um, 4300 Eaton Place. So, um, I, I live very close to this and, and, um, Andy is, has thought about this so long and so carefully and knows a lot more about, um, about the design and the requirements. But my only observation is this. So, uh, we have a, a high energy dog. And so twice a day for four years, I've been walking this dog through Morningside just over and over again. And, um, and ever since this came up and I, I knew this was an issue, I've been looking to see, is there any house like this? You know, is there any, and, and this, these 50 by 100 lots are not unusual. That's a, that's a very common, you know, sized lot. And I've been looking, is there anyone that looks like this with, you know, an 80 plus foot house, you know, on top of a hill this close to a sidewalk? And I don't see anything like that. Uh, I don't, so if you think about, does this fit into the character of the neighborhood? Uh, you know, if you walk around, you don't see that. So what does that tell you? And in terms of it being, you know, this impossible thing to design around, been submitted, we talked about, I mean, there's a, there's a lot being built on Morningside Road, you know, one block down, um, you know, further to the west that, that is not going to be like this. So, um, I, the, the, there's going to be new construction. There, there are going to be tear downs. All of that is, is fine. Um, but let's not put something giant right up to the sidewalk that is out of character with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is there someone else in the queue? Director Benarott?
Yes, sir. Our next caller is Christopher Fast. Operator, will you please unmute Christopher's line? Christopher, once you've been unmuted, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line is now open.
Christopher Fast, I live across the street at 4101 Morningside Road. I just have, and appreciate you guys taking my call and I just have a few comments about this. First off, uh, I can't believe a house that big is being considered for that narrow lot. You know, it should be redesigned or considered for another area. You're trying to put a country club home in a Morningside neighborhood. Um, and, and, uh, if the, the height for this new proposed gargantuan house is determined from the elevated hill it currently sits on, the house will be 34 feet, well, approximately 34 feet high. And that's as tall as a three-story apartment building. Aesthetically does not fit in with this Morningside neighborhood. The proposed driveway will be less than 30 feet from the stop sign on Alden. Yeah, um, yeah, I think the driveway should be on Morningside. Traffic on Alden gets very busy from parents dropping off and picking up their children at Golden Years Preschool on 42nd. They use Alden as their route. Again, this is twice daily. Um, not to mention the water runoff will be significant from this dwelling, also with inadequate green space. So to the whole panel, if you live next to the house that's being proposed, you would be on the phone today, up in arms, addressing City Hall like myself. So please think about that when putting this to a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fast.
Caller is Jeff Fromke. Um, operator, will you please unmute Jeff's line? Jeff, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line is now open.
Hi, Jeff Fromke, 4105 Morningside Road. And thank you, uh, council members. Um, so in addition to all the, the news that you heard on this and you're going to hear, I would like to highlight just a couple of items that I believe in and of themselves are worthy of you voting to overturn the approved variance. The first was the virtual planning commission meeting. Uh, you know, we understand the challenges that proposes, but, uh, you know, it's supposed to be a public forum, um, and standards must be maintained. Um, so if you had a chance to review that lengthy meeting, you may have seen some flaws in the process. For example, and this is a hot button issue, is the 15 foot buildable area claim. Um, as you know, there's other setback rules that apply here, but the builder picked that one. Um, and I believe the builder's intent was to demonstrate, as Andy said, the commission, to the commission, that this was a problem lot, when in fact it's not. As we've discussed, uh, when you take an average of the properties on the block, um, and, and our figures show, uh, an extra nine feet being added to that buildable area claim, uh, which gives you a 24 foot buildable area platform. That's hardly a problem lot. So what we saw is this deliberate action by the developer of manipulating the facts in order to sway the commission and it went unchallenged. And I feel that played a huge role in influencing the commission. The other example occurred during that meeting as well. And that was, um, you know, when the variance looked like it was going to be denied, the developer brought in the prospective owners who talked about their four children and that any compromise in design would create a safety and/or nuisance issue for their four children. Now, hey, we welcome new families to the neighborhood, but personal demographics should have no bearing on codes and regulations and variances. But this banner went unchallenged by the commission and I feel inappropriately influenced them. So what is clearly evident is that the developer used misleading information and emotion to his advantage and was allowed to do it. Finally, the fourth condition that everyone's, uh, talking about is the condition for granting a variance is that it not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The developers comment to that, and I quote, "The new home design complements the neighborhood. The design blends in well." Unquote. No facts, just a subjective, generic opinion. But let's look at the facts for why this house doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood.
Thirty seconds.
Not one house in the area has built so close to the property line in 100 years as this new Alden House was granted. And not one house facing Alden Drive has a garage as the dominant and only feature facing the street as this house does. If this variance passes, the precedent is set overturning rules that stood for decades protecting neighborhoods like this from projects like this. The neighborhood will be forever altered. Please overturn this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fromke.
Our next caller is Roseanne Malavich. Um, operator, please unmute Roseanne's line and Roseanne, please begin with your full name and address.
Line is now open.
Please go ahead.
Line is now open.
Hi, uh, my name is Roseanne Malavich and I live with my husband at 4241 Alden Drive.
Go ahead, Ms. Malavich.
I've lived here for over 30 years and have witnessed much change in Morningside. I'm a strong believer in zoning ordinances and their importance in protecting neighborhoods for the long term. Variance requests should be granted only when certain specified conditions are met. Not because of an emotional tug because a family wants to raise their children in Edina and aid their aging parents, all of which is incredibly admirable, but not reason to grant a variance request. grant a variance request. I do not support this variance request because I believe granting this request will significantly and negatively alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Who determines the essential character of the neighborhood and what harmonious means if not for the residents in the neighborhood? As a resident of Alden Drive, I shudder to think that I could soon be looking at a huge, wide, long, concrete driveway leading up to a garage rather than a house. The lot is buildable. Plus, I have very, uh, I have safety concerns as other people have expressed. Parents are, turn off of Morningside Road onto Alden twice a day, and they are often, often speeding because they are running late. Uh, this has provided a safety issue for decades on Alden Drive. I personally have spoken to the people at the Montessori Golden Years School, whom are, are great, but we have a speeding safety issue. Not to get distracted. Because the lot is elevated, the house will seem even more imposing. If there is any lot which should not be allowed a variance of this magnitude, it is this one.
Thirty seconds remaining.
If the house were on a different lot and setback further, the house could work, but it doesn't work here. Please do not grant this variance request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Malovich.
Our next caller is Kay Miller. Operator, will you please unmute Kay's line? Kay, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open. Okay. My name is Kay Miller, and I live at forty-one oh one Morningside Road, directly across from the, uh, house to be, that's proposed to be built. Um, I've lived in Morningside for thirty-five years and raised their family, and so I know a lot about the neighborhood. And I'm just going to start, people search out neighborhoods such as Morningside to live in for its unique charm and character and historical significance, much like they do Linden Hill. These special neighborhoods with their mature trees, older houses, sidewalks, cannot be recreated. In fact, they're disappearing and they need to be preserved, not destroyed. The proposed house to be built will subtract from that much sought-after Morningside charm by its massive size. Its height will tower over the other homes, blocking their sunlight and views of the neighborhood. Trees will most likely need to be removed in order to, in the building process. There are some walnut trees on there which are very unusual that I think will need to be removed as a matter of fact. Green space will be lessened, the snub garage will stick out like a sore thumb. Basically, a house just does not fit on the lot in the neighborhood. Houses as proposed would fit much better in other suburbs such as newer suburbs, maybe Eden Prairie, Eagan, I don't know, but there are lots out there where somebody who wants this kind of house could build it. Um, and they'd be welcomed by their neighbors there and wouldn't have to go through variances to make all these things, um, happen. Contrary to the builder's design and opinion, a very lovely home could be built on that lot, and the character could be kept. Um, but the, again, the developer or the builder, it wouldn't be a big enough house. Um, is this the decis, is the decision of the council based on satisfying a builder's needs where to him it's just another house? Or is it about honoring the needs and opinions of the people living day in and day out in their chosen beloved neighborhood which they've nurtured and enjoyed over many, many years?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Please reconsider approving the variance for those of us who actually live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Our next caller is Nick Stark. Operator, please unmute Nick's line. Nick, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line is now open.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nick Stark. I live at forty-two thirty-nine Alden Drive, just down the street from the proposed structure. Uh, thank you, City Council, tonight. Uh, the prospective family sounds lovely, and I really appreciate their desire to live in the neighborhood. But sharing family statistics and showing alternative homes on dissimilar lots is not helpful, and it adds to the misleading statements of this request and should not entitle them to this variance. Morningside is a special community with lots of families, including mine. Not many neighborhoods within a suburb have their own Wikipedia page, but if you read Morningsides, it mentions the neighborhood's relatively high density of people and architecturally similar homes. Many in the neighborhood, as you heard tonight, would like to maintain that aspect of similar homes, just as the city of Edina would like to maintain the architecture of City Hall in the redesigned reception area, as was noted earlier in this call. A big home on a small lot is not what Morningside is about. In the case of the proposal at forty-two forty-eight Alden Drive, the builder and homeowner are exaggerating the difficulties of complying with zoning, zoning ordinance. If the builder takes an average of the two adjacent properties on the block rather than just one immediately adjacent to the west, there is a larger area available to build than the variance claims, uh, than the variance, uh, application claims. And the driveway, if moved further to the west down Morningside Drive, would also work. This proposed structure towers over the sidewalk, is not appropriately scaled or styled to the neighborhood. I request that the City Council acknowledge the misleading statements in the variance request, and that the City Council, builder, and potential homeowner, please do not do this to our lovely neighborhood. We would like to see development that complements the neighborhood, not detract from it.
Thank you, Mr. Stark.
Mayor, council members, um, we do have a lot of people still on the line, but I have no one else in the queue at this time. Just a reminder to those who are listening, um, through inter-call, please press star one if you would like to get into the queue to, um, provide testimony. For those who are watching at home, now is a good time to call in. Um, and then, um, please press star one once you've connected. In that short amount of time, I have eight more people in the queue. Um, our first one is Scott Nelson. Operator, will you please unmute Scott's line? And Scott, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open.
Hi, Scott Nelson, um, speaking for my wife Shan and myself, uh, from forty-two forty-four Alden. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and council members. Just a real quick couple of points, and I got a lot of people in the queue. I did spend about three hours on the planning commission call on, uh, the thirteenth of May, and I kind of asked myself, why are we even still talking about this? Uh, during the meeting, the planning commission actually voted this variance down twice, it seemed, and then after a plea by the builder and the family that wishes to build, they revoted a third time and then granted the variance. I found this confusing at best, irregular, and unprofessional at worst. Um, I've also built and remodeled a couple of homes myself, uh, just a couple down from the, uh, the proposed build here. And I think for a builder and an architect to scrape a lot and start with a blank slate, I don't see any reason why they cannot comply with the current city codes and rules regarding the project. It seems disingenuous, it seems lazy, and it seems to take advantage of you, the council, as well as the people who live in our neighborhood. I'm sorry to say that. Um, to the point, when we did our remodel, my wife and I were not always thrilled about the limits required by code. We had to reduce the size of our garage amongst other things, but we wanted to be a part of this great neighborhood, so we found ways to comply with the code in our build. Finally, I, I make it a rule in life not to complain about a problem without bringing a solution, and much of this issue seems to be the desire to move the front of the house, which is currently facing Alden, as all of the houses, uh, corner houses on the street are faced, uh, and move it to, to Morningside. But a simple solution here would be to move the garage, uh, the, the previous, the plan of the garage to, to the west end of their property. That solves a fifty-foot issue, and they've had a garage, uh, on that side of the street for probably a hundred years with, with no incident. So the issue we have with the garage on Alden, not just that it's, it's essentially the only house that would be with a, just only a garage, uh, facing the street, but that's where the, uh, elementary school bus stop is. So people have talked about Golden Years, but there's also kids, a couple of different groups of kids that get on the bus directly across the street from there. It's a very narrow street, and you can only park on one side of the street, and every day in the winter, there's probably three or four cars parked right there trying to keep their kids warm before they get on the bus. So I think just moving the, the driveway to the west end of the property will, will, I think alleviate a lot of the problems. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Next caller is Jaleen Framke. Operator, will you please unmute, uh, Jaleen's line? Jaleen, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open. My name is Jaleen Framke. I live at four one zero five Morningside Road. I appreciate this neighborhood, the neighbors, and welcoming new neighbors. This is an urban neighborhood with a lot of character. We do a lot of walking around here with destinations nearby. While few and far between, there are some homes in this neighborhood, adjacent neighborhoods, where you will find yourself uncomfortable walking by because the home is close to the sidewalk. You hear the conversations, you can hear the fork clinking on their dinner plate, you could hear the TV shows they're watching, and what happens is you feel like you're on private property and in needing their space, when in fact you're on a public sidewalk. It's uncomfortable enough, and like I said, it's few and far between, but to make a person cross the street so you're not hearing their conversation and feeling like you're a peeping tom. While part of forty-two forty-eight Alden is already rather close to the sidewalk, it's a miniscule portion of the home, and it's been there for many years. Understandable. However, if this variance is not overturned, this miniscule portion of the home near the sidewalk becomes eighty-six feet of structure that will loom over the sidewalk. And that is so sad for those of us that have mortgages, we pay taxes here, that the essence of Morningside has changed because the builder didn't respectively come up with a design that fits what is essentially an enormous lot. It's a beautiful, enormous lot. This long, large structure will sadly change the essence, essence of this quaint corner. The variance is a clear violation of condition four of granting a variance, that a structure not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I'd also like to point out that the neighbors, as others have said, um, we, we don't find issues backing out on Morningside Road. It's not a safety issue at all, as stated in the first meeting and was very misleading. On the contrary, it is Alden Drive that becomes extremely busy at certain times of day. As they've said, cars line up there, um, it's, it's a feeder to Golden Years. Furthermore, moving the driveway to Alden would seem to cause safety issues with the stop signs backless of the proposed driveway. Um, side note, I just, as I was watching the presentation, those, the blue renderings of those home, that home is just, it's not appropriate scale. We were looking at it ahead of time, measuring it, they're not, they're inappropriate scales. And finally, I hope that the City Council will watch the original variance vote. It was, it was something. It was voted multiple times, and it kept changing until it was finally passed. As neighbors, we were flabbergasted. For those reasons, and many others, I don't have time for in three minutes, I'd like to ask you to please hear the residents of Morningside Neighborhood and overturn the very awkwardly approved variance. Thank you for your time, City Council. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Francy.
Our next caller is Carrie Franklin. Operator, will you please unmute Carrie's line? And then Carrie, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open.
Hey, my name is Carrie Franklin. I am the current owner of the property at forty-two forty-eight Alden Drive and a seller of the property, hopefully. Um, I say hello to my neighbor Andy across the street and all my other neighbors who chimed in with their, uh, comments this evening. I've lived here for about seventeen years and sent both my kids to K twelve Edina Public Schools. I've been volunteered in the schools and coached youth sports.
Yeah, but I can do that. We can do that in the morning. I'm still on, I'm still on, waiting on this thing. They, they're the very contentious thing ahead of us.
Uh, Mr. Franklin, uh, hold on, somebody else is still on the line and hasn't dropped.
Okay.
Please make sure that unmute Mr. Franklin's line is open.
Go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
Okay. Once again, my name is Carrie Franklin. I'm the current owner of the property at forty-two forty-eight Alden Drive and a seller of the property, I hope. Um, I say hello to my neighbor Andy across the street and all the other neighbors I know around the neighborhood. I've lived in the house for seventeen years and sent both my kids to K twelve Edina Public Schools.
Should we, we're trying to move this contract out?
And coached youth sports. Uh, the neighborhood has evolved and changed over my years here with new homes popping all over the place. I think that's a positive impact in the neighborhood with lots of young families coming in. Uh, I'm now an empty nester. I'm looking forward to moving on to the next stage. Um, this, this house is older and it's not really attractive to younger families, and so it deserves a younger family moving into the neighborhood. I do hope that the City Council agrees with approval of the decision of the planning commission. Uh, I think it's an investment in the Morningside neighborhood, and I'm very sorry that a lot of my neighbors are, uh, complaining about that at this point, but, um, we will move forward and I hope this all works out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Our next caller is Ryan Williams. Operator, will you please unmute Ryan's line? Ryan, once you're unmuted, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open.
My name is Ryan Williams. I live at three nine one five Morningside Road. Our house is next door to four thousand one Morningside Road, which was a teardown project by C. Allen Homes from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. We had to file a lawsuit when C. Allen Homes, their investor, and their excavation company refused to cover seventy-six thousand dollars worth of damage to our property. We eventually received a settlement of forty-six thousand dollars, leaving thirty thousand dollars to pay out of our pocket. Damages including garage and house stucco repair, garage foundation repair, driveway replacement, painting, structural engineering fees, exterminator fees, and legal fees. As the project manager of C. Allen Homes referenced in the last planning commission meeting, they were passing inspection at four thousand one Morningside, but as we learned, the city inspector is only there to review the shoring and excavation of that project. They do not look six feet to the left, the results of the project, and the obvious property damage occurring as both men watched our driveway fall into the giant hole next door. While city officials were sympathetic, no one was able to help us, even the residential redevelopment coordinator, presumably whose job it is to assist residents in such matters. C. Allen Homes had no consequences from the city. In fact, this meeting is evidence of the positive reinforcement this company is receiving for jobs poorly done. The lots in Morningside tend to be long and narrow like the property in question and the one next door to us. C. Allen Homes did not have a variance at four thousand one Morningside and caused us extensive damage, giving them more space dramatically increases the likelihood of damage to neighboring properties. We wouldn't wish our experiences on anyone. Please do not let this builder extract any more value from innocent taxpaying residents. Please do not grant this variance. Thank you.
Next caller tonight is Kathy Coner. Operator, please unmute Kathy's line. Kathy, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open.
Hi, this is Kathleen Coner. We live at forty-two forty-nine Alden Drive. We have been residents on Alden for twenty-plus years. Our home faces forty-two forty-eight Alden Drive, front of the house now. The massive size of the new proposed house for the lot would be intrusive, and we are not keen on moving the driveway and garage to Alden Drive. All homes on Alden Drive face Alden Drive. No other home on Alden Drive has a garage as the predominant feature. The garage in a regular driveway would cause problems with the intersection, stop sign, and bus stop. When we have guests, they park in front of our home. We park in front of our home also since we have a short driveway and need the space for our cars and guest cars. This small area of Alden Drive in front of our home is also where the guests and homeowners park for sick homes. My neighbors have issues backing out of their driveways without hitting cars parked on Alden Drive. On any given day, our street is full of cars parked on Alden Drive. We often have issues with parking when we need workpeople to come to our home, like service plus painters, plumbers, construction workers, et cetera, who need to have their work vans with supplies nearby. Alden Drive is narrower than Morningside Road by approximately Alden Drive is narrower than Morningside Road by approximately eight feet, and we only have parking on one side of the street on Alden Drive. If the tenants of the house at 4248 Alden Drive change their driveway to Alden instead of Morningside, we have a problem. There's not enough parking on Alden as it is. We get a lot of traffic for Golden Years Montessori on our street also, and we have a bus stop on the corner of Alden and Morningside Road and a stop sign at the corner also. This would not be a safe or smart place for a driveway. Please reconsider this. We need our parking, our stop sign, a safe intersection, and our bus stop. The driveway change for the 4248 Alden Drive home is not a good idea, and this does not complement our street or the neighborhood. We have a similar lot and raise two children with ease. If rules are enforced, why do we need to change them?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Coner.
And now, we have the very patient Pamela Balabusko Ray. Operator, will you please unmute Pamela's line? Pamela, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but please start by stating your name and your address.
Lines are open.
Thank you. You actually pronounced it beautifully. So this is Pamela Balabusko Ray from 4246 Scott Terrace. We've lived here for over twenty years, investing in our community in every way we can think, from being neighborly and just being there for everybody, and they are here for us. I'm asking that the recently approved variance on Alden be revoked. I agree that the original meeting lacked professionalism. I, yeah, I didn't know what to make of it. The proposed house by C. Allen is absolutely inappropriate for the site. The footprint is enormous, the height is overbearing, and the garage is an eyesore. The priorities of a builder or owner are not an entitlement. There is a high chance that construction would damage the neighboring houses. It's too close to 4246 Alden, a house built in 1916, one of the dozens of houses deemed eligible for a heritage landmark registration by the Heritage Preservation Commission. When construction damages beloved neighboring houses, it's heartbreaking and very expensive. Why should neighbors who have built a life here be subjected to a situation that could affect their property value and quality of life? Whether it's looking at a house or dealing with damage, they are the ones that have to live with the results. I speak from experience. Our one-hundred-and-nine-year-old house was severely damaged by the teardown next door. Neighbors have stated their concern that their maple tree will be damaged during construction. Morningside is losing hundreds of trees to development. Over a dozen old-growth trees were clear-cut for construction across the street just today. The neighbor's tree should be protected. C. Allen has a history of poor business practices, damaging neighbors' property and not taking responsibility. They do not deserve a variance. They caused major damage to the house kitty-corner from us. They are constantly doing dangerous things, like pushing their crane into electric wires and causing sparks, lifting materials over the road with a crane without blocking it or warning oncoming cars. They almost dropped a whole wall on top of one of their crew members.
Thirty seconds.
They constantly parked into the intersection and in front of the fire hydrant. They worked after hours and on Sundays. We had to constantly complain about them, and they actually have a bad reputation here. Morningside has a unique and very special character unlike any other in Edina. Our history has continued to fade away, and it's time for this neighborhood to be respected. Please vote no on the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balabusko Ray.
Our next caller tonight is Frank Wasmer. Operator, please unmute Frank's line. And Frank, once you've been unmuted, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Lines are open.
Hi, my name is Frank Wasmer. I live at 4246 Alden Drive. I'm Carrie Franklin's current neighbor. I wish him well wherever he moves. I am appalled at the plan. It seems to me we have a builder who had a pre-existing plan who wants to put it on a wrong-side lot. And there must be room for compromises. I realize the family that wants to move in there is sizable. I, in particular, am overwhelmed by the size of the house and how it will use up the whole lot. I think the proposed siting of the garage and this enormous driveway, which will come up off of Alden, is absurd. It's an architectural travesty. I think I would look forward to having these individuals who want to buy the house or live on that lot move in, but the design is wrong. There needs to be something designed that fits the lot and doesn't completely dominate the corner. I request that you vote no for the variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wasmer.
I'm concerned I don't have the correct spelling of our next caller's name. I have Rudolph Gilbert. Operator, will you please unmute that line? And Rudolph, will you please begin by stating your full name and address?
Lines are open.
Hi, my name is Rudolph Gilbert Robles, and I've met Mary Brindo. I've been happy to meet her, and I appreciate the council and the mayor for all the things you guys do. So my topic does not have anything to do with Morningside Neighborhood. My topic concerns our public safety representatives. Currently in our state, it is not illegal for a public safety officer to have sexual sex with someone in their custody. I would like the council and the mayor to consider proposing a plan preventing public safety officers in Edina or working in Edina from having sexual sex with anybody in their custody. That's my only comment, and again, thank you for the council and thank you for your time today.
Could we please get your address, please?
Oh, yeah. 6805 Southdale Road.
Thank you. Yeah, this was out of sequence, and Rudolph, yeah, glad your comments were brief because we're in a public hearing on the Alden Drive property. You should have been speaking in the public comment portion of the agenda, but we'll put it into that portion of the agenda and not in this portion. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
The last person I have in the queue right now is Peter Dawson. Operator, will you please unmute Peter's line? Peter, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Lines are open.
Hi, my name is Peter Dawson. I live at 4110 Morningside Road. Thank you for your time this evening, everybody. We, my family and I, watched the variance hearing that took place over Zoom on May 13th, when we heard the builder state that there was a fifteen-foot width that was untenable and that the configuration of the house needed to be the way it was drawn. He seemed to state this as if it was the only way to build this home. However, the plans, the scale, and the requested variance are not the only solution for this lot. If C. Allen Homes offers prefabricated plans, it behooves the company and the developer to sell this plan as a stamped plan onto the lot. I can only assume that they do not want to redraw or reconfigure any of these plans because this would incur additional expense and impact their bottom line. If you listen to the meeting on May 13th, you will hear the builder cite expense and time as the reason for not making the changes to the proposed property. However, it is under, it is under my understanding that certain regulations have been passed within the city of Edina that would protect residence, and time and money might be necessary to meet these regulations. This lot does not need this variance. A perfectly acceptable home can be built on it without a variance, and it's not a belief that the builder's bottom line should drive the design of the Morningside Neighborhood Homes and our neighborhood in Edina. Thanks so much for your time. I ask that you would reconsider this variance.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Mayor, members of the council, we do still have a number of people on the line, but no one in the queue. If you are on the line and would like to provide testimony in this matter, please press star one on your telephone keypad now to signal to me and the operator that you would like to provide testimony. If you have not yet called in, please do so and press star one immediately so that we can get you in the queue. If no one joins the queue, I would recommend you just hold for a minute just to make sure we don't miss anyone before moving on.
All right, Director Benarut, we'll leave it up to you to advise us when we can safely move on. We don't want to cut anybody off here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benarut. Council members, we talked about proposing these public hearings at noon on July 15th. If that is your inclination, what we would do here with this matter and other matters we're going to hear in public hearings this evening is to have a motion to close the public hearing at noon on July 15th and to continue the action on the item to the July 21, 2020 city council meeting. And if anyone is so inclined, you can make a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Member Anderson moves.
Second.
Second by Member Staunton. Further discussion with respect to the motion to close the public hearing at noon on July 15th and continue the action on the item to the July 21 city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Hi.
Member Brindel.
Hi.
Member Fisher.
Hi.
Member Staunton.
Hi.
Mayor Hovland.
Hi. The matter involving Resolution 2020-60, which involves a variance request and a variance appeal for 4248 Alden Drive, is set now to close that public hearing at noon on July 15th, and we will continue that item for action on July 21st at our city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Member Staunton.
Can I ask that staff between now and our July 21st meeting provide the council with the variance record for 4249 Crocker, a couple of blocks down the street from April of 2019, both the minutes as well as the, as well as the materials? I think people will get help.
Yes, absolutely.
Review it.
That's a good thought. I had written that down too, to look at 4249 Crocker. So thank you for that.
Yep, thank you. And...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to, I think the notes said, so the meeting, the planning commission meeting that everyone was referencing, that was, was it May 13th? That's the one?
Yes.
We're going to try and watch that meeting? Okay.
Get your popcorn out.
Is it a long one?
It takes a while.
Okay. It appears so based on the comments. One thing I just wanted, if I could, just for one moment, I just want to say that, back a few pages in my notes here, but Mr. Warner and Mr. Jensen, you know, two homeowners essentially made really two fantastic presentations today, very well-done on both sides, and that's very much appreciated. A lot of, a lot of good thought on both, both angles.
All right. Anyone else from the council? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next public hearing matter. And the Director Teague has the next matter, which is a proposed ordinance modification under 202004 and a resolution 202063, a comprehensive, proposed comprehensive plan amendment embodied in resolution 202064, and a potential preliminary rezoning for 5132 and 5136 through 48 Hankerson Avenue for Donae Homes. This is a matter that we heard a few months ago now, and I think that Member Anderson, I assume you are taking the same position you took before and that you wanted to recuse yourself because of your family association with one of the Donaes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
All right. So, Member Anderson, would you state what you want to do, please? I think it would be important for you to have it on the record.
Yes, I'll be recusing myself from this matter for this evening and into the future.
Thank you. All right. So, Director Teague.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned, a site you're familiar with at the intersection of 52nd and Hankerson, just west of the Grand View District. Property is currently zoned R1, low-density residential or single-dwelling unit residential. The property is currently guided in our comprehensive plan for low-density attached residential. There's a single-family home on the property and a four-unit apartment building to the Again, just on the edge of the Grand View District. We had a lot of discussion the last time the planning commission and council considered this request about providing a connection into the Grand View District. I think it was pretty clear from both planning commission and the council that that likely connection is pedestrian and not necessarily automobile. That connection would not be made as part of this proposal. But this is a look of the previous request, which was for a ten-unit townhome development on the site. This required a high-density residential guiding in the comprehensive plan. Based on the direction from the city council the last time you reviewed this, the applicant has made a number of changes to the plan. They've reduced the number of units from ten to eight. They have separated the building into two separate four-unit buildings in an effort to preserve trees on the south side of the property. The revisions, the changes, put this proposal in the medium-density category. So the comprehensive plan amendment before you is to medium-density. Here's a couple of renderings of what the building will look, would look like. The applicant will have some colored renderings that will show it a little better than this. So the request before you is a comp plan amendment to re-guide the site from low-density attached to medium-density that would allow the 11.9 units per acre as proposed, and a rezoning to PUD. The last time, the request was for a more traditional planned commercial or a planned residential district with a number of variances. The request this time is for a planned unit development, which actually gives the city more protection in that this is the development that could only be developed as, on the site. It would be creating a zoning ordinance specific for this site that would just allow this development, should it be approved. So the proposed change would be from the low-density attached, as indicated on the left, to a medium-density designation. That would be the comp plan change, really just as simple as that. This is a look at the site plan, pretty much the same from before. They've eliminated a unit in the middle of the, of the middle of the previous structure and at the south side in an effort to preserve these trees that were discussed by the council at the last meeting. So the setbacks are generally the same from the alley, 21 feet, to the north at 12 feet separation between this structure... separation between this structure and the closest single-family home would be about 40 feet. And the 35-foot setback would be maintained to Hankerson. The porches, the little stoops here, would have a 30-foot setback. So primary issue for consideration is the comp plan amendment reasonable for the site and is the rezoning reasonable? Both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval here. The planning commission vote was seven to zero. A lot of the reasons stated the last go-around still apply here. Multifamily residential tend to be clustered near areas where, you know, commercial areas. This site serves as a transition area from the single-family homes to the north and west into the more densely-developed Grandview District. The comp plan also talks about higher densities along Vernon Avenue. Again, the transitional type of use. The comp plan talks about single-family characteristics. Actually, the design of the proposed buildings are similar to what's pictured in the comprehensive plan, again, providing that transition. The, as we talked about the last time, the parking and trash areas come off of the alley on the west side, so it's a front with no garage to the front toward Hankerson. This project provides, what we talked about in the comprehensive plan, is missing middle housing options, so somewhat different from what we've developed in the recent history. Again, we believe it said that reasonable transition from the lower density to the west, to the higher density to the east. And for the rezoning to PUD, again, we believe it's reasonable given that transitional area. Also, the PUD zoning gives the city protection in that this is the development that has to go on the site should any changes occur. The applicant would have to come back through a rezoning process to amend a PUD. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. And with that, I can stop there and answer questions.
Any questions for the council members? I don't know why we got that, that bounce-back sound here. Anyway, I'll keep talking here and see if, let's continue to have a problem. It doesn't seem like it. Seeing nothing from our council, we'll move on to Mr. Benke and Director Teague. I understand you told Mr. Benke to have about 10 or 15 minutes, 15 minutes, I think?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Benke?
I'm muted, sir.
What happened to Mr. Benke? I just saw him a second ago.
I'm muted.
Well, you're on video, Mr. Benke, but we cannot hear you. Cannot hear you.
You know, last time, I recall that we had some difficulties with your earpiece. You might want to just simply use your phone to call in for the audio portion and put your phone on, maybe speakerphone if you can't hold it.
Still don't hear you, Mr. Benke. You're saying that you're calling in, but we're still not hearing you. Is he in the queue, Director Benarot? And maybe a person handling calls doesn't realize he's in the queue?
I was suggesting he call in to the WebEx, just using the WebEx phone number. He shouldn't have to call in to Intercall, though. If he would like to do that, we can figure that out.
He says he did, he says he did do that.
Oh, he did call Intercall? He's not in my queue and I don't see him on the call at all.
Mr. Benke, why don't you try it again? Mr. Benarot, would you give him the phone number, the WebEx phone number and the conference code?
I'd rather not give the WebEx phone number out over the broadcast. Perhaps someone from planning could email that to him.
Mr. Benke, do you, can you give us your cell phone number and we'll text it to you?
On his cell phone number over the air either, sir.
I can, I will email him the invite again.
All right, I just tried again.
Yep. You're on.
Now I'm on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kerry.
Okay, I'm gonna start my presentation then as well. I did, I do have an amended PowerPoint from the last time. It is shorter and it tends to new information, although there is some repeat of the old. I'll try to move across the older information quickly, but some of it is applicable. So once again, you know, we're looking at the site, which is the intersection of Hankerson and 52nd Street, directly across from Jerry's Food, and immediately adjacent to a large apartment building and backing up to single-family neighborhood. None of that has changed, of course. Our project continues to evolve along with the consideration of the council and planning commission's comments. Currently, the four-unit building at 5136 through 5148 was built in 1955, which of course was before the zoning ordinance was codified. The current standing of that building is a non-conforming use, however, clearly at the time that the zoning code was codified, there was no consideration to zone according to what the use actually was. So essentially, our position, of course, is the zoning in 1964 didn't fit the building since the building pre-existed. We want to point out that the site's use has been medium-density attached since the building was constructed and it has been, has been that way since the first edine comprehensive plan, which has never really addressed the fact that that is the use of the building. Medium-density edine is up to 12 units per acre, and we are, our current proposal is at 11.9, which meets the median density standard. The site itself, again, to reiterate, we have the large apartment complex here that would have been possibly two buildings, two or more homes. It was platted as two lots. And then along Hankerson, there's another 11 lots. It would have been houses, but are not by virtue of the organization of Vernon relatives in Hankerson. Essentially, this is our position that Hankerson and 52nd can accept three additional units. Essentially, there could have been up to 13 more houses along that block. There's been some comment about the alley being a play area for the kids, and our position is it doesn't really seem to be that, given these images, which were taken on a, on an afternoon. And clearly, the area is not a playground. It is a city alley. It's a city street in essence. We definitely believe that the product that we are proposing meets a missing metal type of housing. It is a transitional product. It caters to young families occasionally. It caters to empty nesters occasionally. It caters significantly to singles and couples, not necessarily married couples, but basically people who might share a, share housing, for example, a, a single person and their parent, for example. And a lot of the parts of the plan that we've created here are consistent with that. Townhomes do not get built in Edina very often. We do get a considerable amount of interest in them as we have our other open houses and our parade of homes openings within the area. We do believe that townhomes are an appropriate infill product in this area, especially the way that the building has evolved. We do believe that this neighborhood is walkable, and as such, the alley-loaded garage and the front entrance that addresses Hankerson is extremely appropriate. We do believe that the building fits the neighborhood well and is comparable to other products that we have built in Edina. This, for example, is 40 Nathan France. It has a lot of the same kinds of materials that our building will have. It has veneer stone. It has composite siding and trim, multiple textures. Building itself, again, during the parade of homes, we constantly get, because we build townhomes in many, many neighborhood areas of the metro, we're constantly asked when we're going to build something in Edina because there's a market for them here. The site plan has changed. It's, Kerry presented it. There was a unit in this location, which was removed, and there was a unit in this location, which was removed based on the previous council comments. The two large coniferous trees, we did have Luther from City Forestry Department take a peek at them, and he, he thought that they were in good condition. And because of that, it does make sense for us to work at trying to save them. It does create a setback from 52nd Street that exceeds, actually exceeds by quite a bit, the twin homes setback from 52nd on William. However, it does seem to give us an area here of significant landscaping. We do have five additional trees over and above the requirements, and obviously, we have significant foundation planting along with it. Building elevations did change some to try to have more of a residential scale. Some of the comments that we received from the neighbors thought that the actual brownstone character that we had was not especially applicable to the neighborhood, so we did redevelop that elevation to have a little bit different character. And, you know, from the corner of 52nd and Hankerson, this would be the view north on Hankerson. The buildings do have, like I say, multiple textures of composite materials, stone veneers. As you, as you sort of look into the buildings a little bit, there are a couple of different porch types to break up the pattern as you go up the street. This porch, for example, front entry porch has open rails on two levels. You can actually step out your front, upper door as well, perhaps have a cup of coffee watching the people go by or looking across Vernon into the Jerry's area. The second porch down also has an upper-level deck as well. Basically, like I said, as we pointed out, the trees are significant as they go along the site and they do exceed requirements. There is a slope as you come out of the front of the units that drops down to Hankerson. That still is there, but yet the garages are meeting grade at the alleys. Again, this is the view sort of southwest. This is the house immediately to the north, and as pointed out, setback from the house building is 40 feet, though the setback from the north property line is 12 feet. The buildings themselves, I think, character-wise, they should end, to me, they should end better. I don't know that, I'm going to get everybody to agree with me, but I do believe they do. Here's a view sort of in the front yard, looking down the line toward 52nd Street. And then, again, sort of an aerial that gives us a view of the atrium that is still a feature of the buildings. Every unit essentially has private space on the inside to, for light and air. It also helps contribute to the water retention features of the project to make up for the additional hardcover that we are asking for. Again, the driveways do face the alley. There now is the gap in the building. It is a full unit width, so it is a full 20 feet, and that actually lines up well with the duplex on William and the adjacent single-family. They're fairly close to that in terms of how they line up. And I'm going to go back to that elevation. Just a couple of comments here. The staff report pointed out, you know, the four-unit building is, the current four-unit building is, is a medium-density use and has been since it was, since it was built. We do believe that the comprehensive plan amendment, although it re-guides it, we believe it's correcting the use of the site to match the existing use. We have, are very aware that this particular lot is surrounded by a variety of uses, including single-family homes, apartment buildings, shopping centers. I actually have a, an image I'm going to share next of the actual area here. And I'm trying to find that right now. Basically, this is, this sort of shows the building itself, the single-family home, and it shows the duplex, but it shows the proximity of this lot to both the large five-story apartment building as well as directly across the street, Jerry Center, the Wells Fargo Bank. I think this image is pretty, it's a pretty positive one that shows how much of a transition this site is, can handle because of the adjacent much higher-density uses.
I'm not seeing.
Mr. Benke, all we saw was a black screen and a gray screen.
Okay, I will try that. I will try that again. Same thing, black, black screen.
Yeah, three-fourths black, one-fourth kind of a gray.
All right, I've got, I've got two screens, and it's telling me I'm, I think I'm violating a rule of WebEx here, so give me a second to try to pull that image over into the proper And we'll try that again. Did that come up black again, or do you actually see an aerial?
No, we got an aerial now.
Very good. Okay. So, again, the apartment building, the single-family home, the duplex on William, the five-story apartment building to the south, but it's pretty easy to see the proximity of this project. Essentially, the apartment building is directly across the street from, from our proposal. Obviously, at the bottom of the picture, you're across Vernon, and you're seeing just the edge of the Jerry's Retail District, part of Grandview, I guess. I think it's pretty clear also to see that this site is, is very accessible from the standpoint of pedestrian traffic. Currently, you can cross at this location. If other development happens in the future, there may be other opportunities for pedestrian crossing into the retail district. for pedestrian crossing into the retail district. Um I also have a photo here. I we we were not able to pull together a a material board for planning commission due to COVID. Uh but what I did have is uh photos of buildings that we have built. So these are actual photos of um existing buildings that we have built in the with the same material choices. And where did it go? Oh, there we go. Uh this should be it. Uh that's the interior. Uh you should be seeing a a home, a little bit of snow outside.
Yeah, we're.
And what I
No.
Very good. And what I what I'll do is I'll I'll bring you in uh and you can you can actually see the composite siding, the uh trim, stone veneer. This is a little different type, but it's very similar. Uh essentially, these products are identical to what we used on the Forty-Ninth and France. Uh this is a color scheme that's a little closer to what our proposal is for uh for the Hankerson uh townhome project. Um so uh let's see.
Which Forty, what Forty-Ninth and France project are you talking about?
Uh that would be our building, that would be this building. Uh this is uh this is the twin home that we built about three years ago, two years ago now, at Forty-Ninth and France. Uh it did take the place of another twin home, uh but essentially, it was one of our ways of testing the water uh in the city of Edina for uh for uh more of a townhome style product.
Mr. Mayor, the fif- the fifteen minutes of presentation time has expired.
Okay.
Uh I will stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Benke. Uh questions from council members for Mr. Benke? Member Fisher?
Yeah, I just wanted, so I think what you were showing, are you suggesting that this will be a little bit more in the the white with the slight gray colored brick, sort of black shingle-ish color?
Correct, correct. Uh I I think that the color schemes in my graph, in my 3D model uh is accurate. Uh I'm going back to that right now. These are the color schemes that we're using. We we do have a white uh color scheme planned currently uh with some uh off-white accents uh in the gray tone. Uh the stone is is a gray tone. Uh the roof is a rustic black shingle. Um those are the colors uh that you saw in that uh home that has the snow in the front yard and that color scheme is what we are intending here as well.
Yeah, I I actually think it's an improvement from what you've shown in the past. I think it's just a little bit more elegant um just color scheme, so.
I appreciate that. I obviously, the amount of time I'd have to work on it, uh I keep evolving it and I I think it just keeps getting better, honestly.
Okay, got other questions, comments from council members?
I do.
Yes, Member Brindle.
Thank you. I'm in a bit of a a sneezing time here, so pardon me. Um Scott, uh in uh in conversations with neighbors uh in preparation for this meeting, um one of the suggestions that came up was whether all the garages have to fit, have to be rear-loading and whether um there could be some undulation um on the front. And I see that you've made some very nice, significant changes to the front with the varying um styles of stoops. But would it be possible to load in half the garages to the front and half the garages to the back instead of having them all in a row on the back?
Honestly, I I don't believe that addresses the council direction for um alley loading uh right off the bat. I think from the other uh comment I would make is I think it uh it grossly complicates the methods of it it it's it's gonna directly impact other aspects of the project. For example, currently, the front yards of these units, as well as some of the side yards, are used for water retention. I couldn't run a driveway across that front yard uh if we're gonna continue to use it in that fashion. Um it you've also now totally changed the character of the project. No longer is it a uh a front yard uh without a garage facing it, which is similar to the bulk of the earlier homes built on Hankerson. Now you've sort of mixed and matched and are almost, including some of the newest homes that are on Hankerson that up at the north end. And you're essentially bringing a new uh, you know, a more contemporary character, you know, arguably, you know, from the sixties uh on up to current day suburban character into what arguably should be perhaps a little bit more of a a pseudo-urban character. And I think that's really what this project has evolved into from the earliest um concepts that we showed you that did have front-load garages. I think one thing to keep in mind, I think a lot of the concern is that snow removal here is gonna be a problem uh because other people have problems with snow and there's no place to put it, or they try to put it in the alley. We have to keep in mind that there's an association for this project and that association will have snow removal as one of their functions. And removing snow from the driveway does not mean it gets deposited in somebody else's yard. It means remove the snow. This project actually is going to alleviate some of the snow removal problems for this area. Now, we realize that currently, none of these properties that we're looking at changing uh access to the alley, however, they're all entitled to.
Okay, thank you.
Member Fisher, did you have your microphone off mute? No? Okay. Member Stotin? I can't see Member Stotin, so I don't know if he wanted to ask any questions of Mr. Benke.
Nope.
All right, I've got a few, Mr. Benke.
Very good, Mayor.
I think you're heading in a interesting direction here, but would you have access to that the the side-by-side home you put over on Forty-Ninth? Can you put that one up? I'll tell you, I've got three, three things I'm concerned about here. I'll tell you what it what they are, if you can get that one up.
I'm working on it. Yep.
All right. You you see, this is, this is the way I've sensed this. Anyway, you see how this twin home that you built, if you want to call it that? Set, to me, it kind of settles into the site. And you've got uh things at grade and then you've got windows in the roof line. Now go back to your other drawing of the proposed project. The same elevation you had up there, that southeast view from looking southeast to north.
Yeah, there may be an easier way to do it than what I do, but this is the quickest one I can think of, this one.
Yeah, that's fine, or the other one would have been okay too. So here's what, here's what's bothering me. It it's it it, the whole thing feels unwieldy. It feels like it's too tall. It feels like it's kind of shaky on its legs. And the reason, I think, is because you got it up out of the ground with those walk-up uh staircases that, to me, look inappropriate. I think you should be pulling it down to grade. That means, of course, you want to use the basement. You're gonna have to put uh window wells in there with egress windows, but you could pull the whole thing down by three feet probably. And the the what I'm getting at is I think you're still too tall for the neighborhood. It doesn't, doesn't feel to me yet like it fits in the neighborhood. The other thing is the way you got it drawn now, you've got, you've got the ground level, the basement level up out of the ground. Then you've got two stories of building and then you got the roof on top of that. It looks like a three-story building. To me, you could pull the same, you could do the same thing you did over on Forty-Ninth and pull the roof, use that roof line with your second, in your second story. I think you could pull eight feet of height out of this thing, six to eight feet of height out of it by doing it the way you did over on Forty-Ninth uh and then pulling it down to ground level so you don't have those kind of flimsy-looking walk-up stairs in the front of the building. And it looks more solid and anchored to the ground and and settled into the site. So I I don't like what I'm seeing so far because I don't think it fits in the neighborhood. And um those are my comments. I think it's it, for me, it's the height. You gotta, you gotta think about building into the roof. You could lower it that way. You get it more in in context with the houses around it because even though you got that apartment building to the south, you've got a residential neighborhood to the north and the west. Your elevation above grade is too high. I think you should be thinking about lowering that. Maybe these are cost issues, but I I don't, I mean, to me, I'm I'm not sensitive to that. I I'm sensitive to making sure this, if it was ever approved, it fit in the neighborhood. And then the third thing is the materials. You talked about stone veneers. I don't know what that means. And you talked about composite siding and that one house looked pretty good. Uh and I don't know what you're doing for windows. Uh but I think you should bring your material board to City Hall. One of the disadvantages of these virtual meetings is we can't see what you're proposing to use. And I think you should bring a materials board to City Hall and people in the council could stop by there, leave it with Lynette, and we can stop and take a look at it because I'm not comfortable making a, making a decision understanding we're gonna have a public hearing here in a few minutes uh based on on what I see in a uh in a photo. So those are the three things, height, elevation above grade, and materials. Those are my issues that I'm concerned about right now. And so if nobody else is, that didn't prompt any questions or inquiries from anybody else, we'll open this up for public testimony. Director Bennerott?
First caller in this matter is Tyler Gress. Operator, will you please unmute Tyler's line? Um Tyler, please begin by stating your full name and address, including apartment, condo, or suite number.
Line's now open.
Hi, uh good evening, Mayor Hovland, city council members and associates. Uh my name is Tyler Gress. I live at fifty-one thirty-seven William Avenue, which is right across the alleyway um from the proposed area. Um tonight, I'll speak briefly but with purpose. Um I will say this latest iteration of the proposed plan is the first which uh attempts to address the outcry of a neighborhood asking for its character to not be changed. It's undoubtedly the best version we've seen, but that doesn't make it good enough for Hankerson or William Avenues or the surrounding area. Uh this proposal remains at its core, a rectangular eyesore that's been split in two. The builders have continued to, an all-too-common trend of attempting to squeeze as much housing and profit into a small area as possible. This is the exact type of neighborhood the comprehensive plan was meant to protect. Please allow it to, especially so early in the plan's youth. I had a wonderful conversation with Mary Brindle yesterday as we discussed the proposed plan. We reflected on the previous plans and consolations that have been made. Ultimately, a moment of discussion that stuck out for me that I wanted to share was that we both mutually agreed that a more creative plan would be better for the needs of the area. We discussed that two, three-unit structures or variation in building types or aesthetics were much more appropriate, but that isn't what is being proposed. Fortunately, as council members, you have the power to ask for changes like this. If you feel they would be a better fit, please, our neighborhood implores you to exercise this power. Soon, my infant son will be old enough to play with the type of toys that require you to match shapes with the given slot, place square blocks into square holes, et cetera. Right now, it feels like Donnie Homes are continuing to try to force the large rectangular block into our metaphorical neighborhood triangle. Let's find a triangle. You need only look to the correspondence section of the meeting to find several triangles or plans that will fit in the ma- in the neighborhood creatively, which were submitted by members of the neighborhood. I'll uh finish as a, as a side note, the the pictures of the alleyway that were just displayed by the builder uh were taken on an overcast day, no temperature recorded, no time given, uh and faced the complete direction outside of the alley uh towards an area that doesn't have a lot of driveways to it. Um let's, and that's the area that they're proposing adding eight driveways to. Um that was, um I'd be happy to submit multiple videos of my own that would uh suffice uh to say that it's a busy alleyway. Uh thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gress.
Our next caller tonight is Robin Moller. Operator, please unmute Robin's line. And Robin, once that's done, please begin by clearly stating your full name and address.
Line's now open.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Uh my name is Robin Moller and I'm at fifty-one twenty Hankerson Avenue.
Go ahead, Robin.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um I agree with what was said. We were hoping to see some additional options from Donnie Homes um with maybe some other variations. We did submit um some variation ideas that kind of show two driveways in an alley, um in the alleyway versus eight, two in the front. There's already one existing alley in the, or driveway in the front on Hankerson Avenue and then also one on Fifty-Second. And the ones that we have submitted have five, like two duplexes and one single-family home. And we feel something like that with with variations in heights would be more neighborhood-like and keep the traditional neighborhood feel. And um there are about thirty kids, and I'm not exaggerating, in a four-block radius that ride their bikes up and down the alley to each other's homes around the street. Um probably thirty kids under twelve years old in this neighborhood. It's so cherished and it's really lovely. And I think that having eight really large homes compacted in a small area is going to change the whole dynamic of what that feels like.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moller.
You're welcome.
Our next caller is Dennis Bornflass. Operator, please unmute Dennis's line. Dennis, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Line's now open.
Hi there, uh thank you, uh the council members and Mayor Hovland. Um my name is Dennis Bornflass. My address is five-one-two-four Hankerson Avenue. Uh just several points here. Um multiple times, uh Donnie Homes has told Mayor Hovland and more specifically at the April seventh city council meeting that they are priced out below ten units. And I really think we should hold the uh the builder uh to their word. Um we're definitely below ten units at this point. Uh second point is that uh on page fifteen of the applicant's presentation uh from the same four-seven city council meeting, um it does not show the thirty-foot-tall, and maybe Director Teague, you can clarify this, but from what I've seen, there there are now thirty-foot-tall by five-foot-wide or deep porches. Uh and then the current proposal that we saw tonight does include those, but the one from the four-seven meeting did not include those. So uh it looks like they're about twenty-five to thirty feet tall and they will definitely impact the uh the setback or the visibility or the view of the uh of the northern homes on on Hankerson. So maybe Director Teague or the builder can clarify this, but we didn't see those there before. They are there now. And if you look at the diagram that the builder put up tonight, uh they are pretty massive and they will affect uh our views uh heading, heading south. Whether technically or not, they they uh they impact the setback on Hankerson, I'm not sure, but they will definitely block our views. Uh another point, um the the Donnie Homes has told us, and I quote, "This project will enhance property values in the neighborhood." In order to, and this is said in order to gain the approval from the Edina City Council. And unless the bear, the builder can guarantee this for the neighbors that it will improve the resale value of our homes, this could be an illegitimate statement. Um point number four, um with our proposal that we've submitted, there are five units. There would be to keep costs down. There would be, to keep costs down, there would be a rebuild of the, uh, Rambler, as well as two twin homes. And then the twin home on the corner of Fifty-Second and Hankerson would actually wrap around the corner, so one driveway would be on Fifty-Second and one driveway would be on Hankerson. So we'd end up with only two driveways in the alley instead of ten, I'm sorry, instead of eight, uh, now. And then else, from a vehicle standpoint, instead of eight to sixteen vehicles that will be added to the driveway, we will only have about two to four. So it's, it's a plan that, uh, we submitted because we weren't seeing any other options, and that we think it's a very good plan. Not sure how much time, but just from a cost standpoint, if you look at the five units, uh, let's say that the land is three hundred thousand per unit.
Thirty seconds.
That's one point five. Thank you. And so, one point five million for the land, if they were three hundred thousand per unit for the five units for the land, and two hundred thousand, let's say, to build each unit, uh, total cost would be two point five million. If you got seven hundred thousand out of each of those five, that would be a million-dollar profit on a point-six-seven acre just for five units. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis.
Mayor, members of the council, um, I do not have anyone else on the line right now who has not already testified. Um, I would recommend that we wait just a minute or two, and in case someone still watching from home would like to call in, um, as there is a slight delay with the broadcast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Staunton?
I just wanna make sure we're kind of gathering all of the comments and materials as they come in. There's been a couple of references to alternatives that were proposed, and we don't have to do that tonight, but if staff can make sure that we've got all of that stuff as we're, um, niddling on this between now and when we continue the public hearing.
Yeah, that's a good thought. I, I did think I saw...
I know I've got bits and pieces, but I'm just not sure I've got all of them.
Not all of them.
I'm sure I've got everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something during the public hearing still.
Yeah, is we back to Mr. Benke?
Yes.
Yeah, hold on, Mr. Benke, we may have some questions for you, and then, and then, um, let's just, we'll come back to you. And I know I've got a couple for you.
See that we have any other callers joining, so I think it's safe to move on.
Okay. Um, so this, uh, Mr. Benke, this idea that Dennis advanced of, uh, and I think it was on Better Together, he donated a site to, the, the idea of a Rambler with two twin homes gives you five units, is that a viable?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Unfortunately, the, the neighbors presenting, uh, alternatives of their design, uh, they have no idea, uh, pricing, they have no idea of the dollars, the values that are here. Um, honestly, having to remove two units has, uh, put, uh, a severe crimp into the, into the landowners', uh, project. Uh, we realize that this is what's being, uh, asked for by the council at the last meeting, and we tried to present a project that addressed that. Sorry, go ahead, Scott Bill.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking if we've, if we're closing the public hearing.
Um, yeah, well, we can do that and then do the motion a different way. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, or continue the public hearing until such, until the fifteenth of July.
Yeah, that's...
Or recess it for this evening. I'd make a motion.
Okay. The motion is going to be to, uh, close the public hearing at noon on July fifteenth and continue the action on the item to the July twenty-one city council meeting? Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So is that Member Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, further discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi.
Um, okay, Mr. Benke, we're coming back to you now. So, I think the question of, um, I don't know if you finished your answer. Absolutely not, you said. Go ahead and finish.
I had not, correct. Um, yeah, basically, the values of, that, that are reasonable for this neighborhood are based on our market research that we did on surrounding projects. We are seeing what is selling, we are seeing what is not selling, we are seeing what prices of those projects are. We are doing everything we can to keep this project in the sellable price point, and their proposals actually have no bearing on this project. But it, it, they, they, all they're doing is muddying the water that they seem to think that a project like that could work. They have no idea what the dollars on a project like this are. I know that Mr., I know that Mr. Brunch, I just threw out some numbers, but they are, I don't know where he gets them, honestly.
Yeah. So then, what, what are you projecting your cost per square foot for construction to be?
Uh, we, that's, we typically don't, um, I, I don't have a number like that right on the tip of my, uh, my tongue. We don't, uh, factor our proper, our projects like that because we typically, me specifically, I typically work before, uh, before sales. And that number is typically a real estate number that happens on the other end. Um, I don't normally see that. I don't have it handy here.
Okay. The other question I had was...
I, I can say that, I apologize. I can say that the, the units are, are, have moved a bit upmarket to being solidly in the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar range now, instead of starting at the high six hundreds. So just the fact that we had to lose two units has changed the market price significantly.
Understood. So, uh, one of the neighbors was concerned about the, um, the view, uh, line, and it caused me to think about the height of the proposed project compared to the existing apartment building height. Could you comment on that?
Oh, I, I did not. Uh, I know that the existing building, uh, does sit, uh, somewhat down from the, from the alley. Uh, it is above the alley. We, we need to remember that this site has over eight feet of fall from the south, from the northwest corner to the southeast corner, which is part of the reason why you're seeing, uh, two and a half stories exposed on the, arguably, the front of the, of the building. Um, the garages do need to address the alley because that's where you're serving them. So we are following the alley elevation that we continue from north to south. Um, and we currently do have part of the basement exposed with area wells in order to keep those elevations, um, manageable, uh, honestly. Um, this building is not three stories from the, from the street. It is two and a half, barely. And, you know, quite honestly, our feeling was that increasing the work on developing the porch area, which the porches did exist before, that, that porch is the same porch that showed on the previous iteration of the plans. We just thought that by developing it in a little more significant feature, it would break up the outfront elevation, as was commented by, by, uh, Member Brindle. Um, honestly, we, we do think that this building, as it evolves, continues to, uh, develop its character. Uh, I do believe I'm done with that at this point. I do think this building fits the neighborhood well. Um, our main floor of the north unit is the same elevation as neighbor, uh, neighbor Brunch, uh, Dennis, uh, Dennis's main floor. His house is a Rambler. If his house had a second floor, his second floor would be the same elevation as our north unit. As you go from the north end of the property to the south end of the property, the buildings drop almost four feet. So we are following the street grade, we are following the, the alley grade as we come north to south.
So what's the height at the ridge line on the north end?
It's the same as the south. There, it's about thirty-three feet, and, uh, from my understanding, we're allowed thirty-five.
Mm-hmm. Well, you're allowed, you're allowed to... You've got other issues to deal with here, and that is your request to modify the comp plan and your request for rezoning, so...
Correct. Right, the modification to the comp plan, Mr. Mayor, I believe all we're doing is correcting, uh, an error that happened, uh, decades ago in that the original zoning, which none of us had anything to do with, did not address the use, the existing use, which is a medium-density use of the existing building. And I think all we're doing is we're, we're memorializing that use going forward. We're only asking for medium-density now because of our eight-unit project.
All right. Member Fisher?
So I just wanna clarify, and it's been mentioned here, and, and maybe Carrie Teague can jump in, but if somebody built a single-family home on this site, the height could be, be taller than what is being proposed right now for this building. Just wanna be very clear about that.
That is correct. They could build up to thirty-five feet to the ridge line.
My guess is if you go up the street, one to two blocks, you're gonna find houses that are probably taller than what is being proposed here. Some of the newer builds. I, I, I just wanna be careful that we're not, you know, that, um, I mean, everyone has a right to, to have whatever feelings they wanna have, but I, I, I feel like we had a very clear conversation last time around, and, you know, I, I just would hate to start changing the rules again in terms of what we're asking. Um, and, and I don't think the height really, unless I'm just misreading it, I don't think the height element has changed much. The porches are more pronounced, but, um, and, and I think the mayor's concern about that front stoop, that's a valid concern because it looks a little weird to me. But I'm wondering, is that just a graphic issue, or are you really intending those steps to be kind of like you could crawl under them? I, I don't know that you would want that.
Well, honestly, there is a egress window, uh, there is a window that could satisfy egress for a family room that is underneath that front porch. So, yes, it does...
You would, you would keep it open for that reason, then?
Yes, yes. I mean, keep in mind that I have a limited front, uh, uh, front width on these buildings, and while the end units can, uh, benefit from additional exterior wall, the middle units do not. So I have a window in front for a bedroom on the front, uh, lower side there, and I have a window for a family room. And if I, if I closed in the front porch, for example, all the way to the ground, I would have a problem there in terms of, I mean, I, I'm not legally required to provide that window, uh, in terms of egress, but it's certainly good practice to give, uh, a window for ventilation or for, uh, uh, for light. And, uh, honestly, I, I never expected that to become an issue on this, uh, on this project at this time.
It might be just the angle of that rendering or something, and it just makes it look a little odd. Um, did you always have that detail, essentially?
Uh, we, uh, our front porch was the same. The only thing that we did different here is I, I made them a little stronger. I included, uh, uh, an upper-level, uh, deck now off of that upper bedroom, so that now has a door instead of a window. So the front porch did become more of an element on the front, and from my understanding, it continues to be, and allowed encroachment into the front yard setback, and as such doesn't count, uh, because it's not enclosed and it's not living space. So, you know, it hasn't changed our front setback from the thirty-five feet. Uh, and then because I'm treating them two different ways, as you go up the building, I, I feel like I'm, I've established a rhythm of, of that front. And I'm, while I'm sitting here talking about it, I'm, I'm gonna put it back up again. So basically, this one is, is a, is a column that, that continues up and down. There's an upstairs deck, there's a main floor deck, this is the front door to the building, and yes, there is a window down below here. This is a, a bedroom window on the corner that gets into a, a well to bring grade up almost to, uh, two and a half feet about where it would be if it was a standard lookout. Essentially, there's very little of that window showing above grade here. So we have one story, two stories, and then a partial story is showing. That's consistent all the way up the building as the, the grade is, is, uh, as the grade goes uphill. Again, from this corner of the lot to the far corner behind the building, I have over eight feet of fall, and we're taking that up through the building, which is why it's exposed. Uh, the other side of the building, the alley side, only shows two stories, which is no different than a two-story house would facing that alley.
Right. And for the record, you know, I, it, you know, I know, um, Mayor, you expressed some concern about the, the elevation or, you know, having the elevated porch. From an urban design perspective, from a, you know, getting people to sit on their porch and be part of the neighborhood fabric as other people are walking down the sidewalk, which will, you know, I think we need a sidewalk here at some point, but I think it's a good thing. And, um, you know, I, I think it's, uh, it's a good feature in a neighborhood. So I, I don't have, I don't share that concern at all with those front porches. I actually rather like them.
I like the front porch idea too, but I, I think it could be at grade. And I don't like the flimsy look, uh, that floating look of that staircase with the post sticking down underneath it. I, I don't, I, I think it cheapens the project.
I, I, I think, this is a wall underneath here, actually, Mayor. Uh, I think the shadow is cast across it, and you're not seeing it, but there's actually a full wall, uh, right underneath the stairway here, and the same thing on, on the other ones as well. Um, the, the column comes down in the corner, but there's a full wall below the stairway. You don't see from the front directly back. Obviously, from the sides you can, because I need to provide, uh, the ability to get ventilation in there.
Yeah, well, it looks to me like it's wide open underneath there, and it's all air.
Yeah, I, I, I can see it from this view as well, sir, but I, I, it, it, I do have, uh, my architectural plans that, uh, we are in process of shows that as a, as a solid wall underneath the front edge of that porch.
And that's what I was referring to earlier, is that I think there's a graphic issue going on here.
And, and, you know, if we needed to, this whole area under that stair could be filled in too, as long as I can maintain the opening back here for the ventilation. Anything in front of this, front of the porch could be, could have a little bit more solid feel. That would be very easy to do.
Yeah, well, that, that to me would give it more substance and strength instead of looking like it's just, uh, a floating staircase.
Sure.
But, uh, but I'm still concerned about, I know that Member Fisher is correct in quoting, uh, about the code, but when I look at the, uh, the elevation that, that is maybe in black and white, uh, that shows, uh, the, the two, uh, four-unit buildings, it, they just look, uh, yeah, that could be it. I mean, they just look, uh, unwieldy to me in a way, and I, I just feel like there's too much height in there, and I'm sure it costs more money to build it, build into the roof line, uh, the way you did over on Forty-Ninth. I just don't, I, I just think anything you can do to settle them into the center a little bit better would be helpful. And I'm not, I'm not prejudging this thing as to whether I'm voting for these things or not. I'm just telling you from a design standpoint, those are my concerns.
Sure. I, I understand, Mayor, and, you know, I, I do feel awkward when I offer my design sets too, uh, but honestly, I think a lot of what you're seeing on the Forty-Ninth over there, it's simply lines on the wall, that it's essentially a, a rake or a, an overhang that it's, that it's applied. Um, I can certainly continue to, you know, evolve parts of this, uh, elevation, but it, it doesn't, I mean, the one thing that we haven't changed all the way through is that we do believe we've got a very, uh, well-thought-out plan. And I, I think that what, what keeps happening here is everybody goes, "Well, you know, it, it looks like, it looks like you haven't changed too much." Well, that's right, because the plan itself is, you know, for flawless function. The function of this plan is, is very solid, and we believe it addresses the need for the, the buyers for these units. And we have to remember too, these are for-sale townhomes. These are not rentals, these are not apartments. Every person here owns their own home, just like people up the street on both sides, um, on, on Hankerson, on William, farther back into the, into the neighborhood. Um, they are homeowners. They have a common association that maintains the outsides, so they don't even have to worry about that, which means the neighbors don't have to worry about that. But in the meantime, that plan also has to fit the site, and that grade that we, that exists here is significant. And what I've been trying to do all the way along is address the alley grade, uh, along with Hankerson's grade. And, you know, honestly, I think this, this, to me, this addresses it elegantly in terms of... They have a common association that maintains the outsides, so they don't even have to worry about that, which means the neighbors don't have to worry about that. But in the meantime, that plan also has to fit the site, and that grade that exists here is significant. And what I've been trying to do all the way along is address the alley grade along with Hankerson's grade. And, you know, honestly, I think this, to me, this addresses it elegantly in terms of you're able to walk in, you're able to walk into your kitchen from your garage and not go up or down any stairs. And then when you come out on the front, you're elevated a little bit, so you have a little bit of a view out over the, out over the street and out across the wedge out the front and across to Jerry's and the retail area. And I think that's the part I keep coming back to is that it's essentially that transition between the retail, the heavy-duty retail, and the single families behind these. And again, if I, if my elevation, if this elevation went farther to the right, the top elevation went farther to the right, you would see that the home next door is, his main floor is the same elevation as this one, so it's no higher than his house outside of his of the Rambler, and this is a two-story on a basement. So I've been trying, I've been really working at trying to keep this building low on the site, and I'm trying to show that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, yes.
Can I suggest that we move on? I think, I think you and Mary have shared some, what are the concerns with the applicant, and we have two more public hearings and four other agenda items.
Thank you, Member Sutton. All right, Mr. Benke, thanks for visiting with us, and we've got to continuing this matter to closure on noon on July fifteenth. People can continue, you included, can continue to submit things that you think are important relative to the matter, and then we'll deal with this on July twenty-first.
Very good, sir, and I've done enough, I've done enough council and planning commission meetings to understand exactly where you're coming from as of the time.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to the public hearing matter involving a request for variances at fifty-nine twenty-eight Abbott Avenue South, and Director Teague has this matter as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located just east of France as you move toward Minneapolis, just north of Sixtieth. There's a look at the site. Note on the aerial, it was originally platted as two lots, and those two lots were combined and one home built. All other homes on the block of Abbott that face Abbott are fifty feet wide. This one is a hundred feet. There's a closer look at the site. It is, there are alleyways on the west and south side of the lot. Note that the two lots to the west across the alley were where three lots were originally platted as fifty-foot wide lots. This fifty number here indicates the width of the underlying plat. They turned three lots into two. Here's a look at the existing home on the site. You can see the alley there to the south. What the applicant is proposing here is to tear down the existing home and build two new single-family homes. They've made some revisions, working with our engineering department, to satisfy some of the grading and drainage requirements. The plan that you see before you has been found to be acceptable by engineering. Should the plat be approved, individual, you know, when individual specific homes are built, they would again have to work with engineering as part of a building permit process. They have run the median calculations, and the median lot area is just over sixty-seven thousand, sixty-seven hundred square feet, one hundred and thirty feet deep, and fifty feet wide. This lot is somewhat smaller in area and width and depth due to the alleys that have been platted adjacent to the site. So this request requires a subdivision, lot width variances from seventy-five feet to just a hair under fifty feet, lot area variances from nine thousand square feet to just over sixty-three hundred square feet, and lot depth from one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and twenty-seven. The proposed lots are very close to the median averages in the neighborhood. This is a graphic that we typically show, just indicates a history of similar type subdivisions where the applicant was reestablishing the underlying plat. I show this just to demonstrate that the city has approved some and denied some. We've really looked specifically neighborhood by neighborhood, lot by lot, when making those decisions. So again, this is another one similar to that. Staff has outlined alternatives for approval and denial for your consideration within the staff report. A primary issue, are the variances, are the findings for the variances met to justify the subdivision? In this case, both staff and the planning commission on a seven to zero vote are recommending approval. We believe that the variance criteria has been met. Again, the proposal reestablishes the original plat of the two lots. The variances are reasonable in the context of this block, the lots that face Abbott are all fifty feet in width, with the exception of this property. Practical difficulties include the location of the alley on the south and the west side that make the lots a little bit smaller. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the request subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the resolution and staff report. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Teague? Okay, we'll move on. Is there an applicant here with us this evening, Director Teague?
Yes, the applicant is with us, and I see he just unmuted his mic, and he will make a short presentation.
All right, very good. This is, Peter, how do you pronounce that good Italian name of yours?
Micheludi.
Micheludi.
Yep. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. My wife and I are twenty-plus-year residents of Edina. We live at fifty-four thirty-three Woodcrest Drive, about a mile from the property. Our daughter actually lives over on Fifty-Eighth and Zenith, and so we're very familiar with the area. A couple of years ago, we began, we were building a house for our daughter on Zenith, fifty-eight thirty-three Zenith. Her move to Minnesota fell through. We enjoyed the process, and we had teamed up with Bellin Construction, a young builder, Tim Bellin. He is also on, if we have any questions, and started to, you know, take some other opportunities to build some houses. So we have built houses at fifty-eight seventeen Zenith and fifty-nine oh four Zenith. So we are very familiar with building on fifty-foot lots in that depth, in that specific neighborhood. We try to be very respectful of the neighborhoods and the neighbors and listen to their concerns. The lot we are proposing to divide into two lots currently has a rental home on it, and we do not own the lot. We are working with the owner of the lot to buy that, subject to, you know, subdividing the property. We, obviously, as Kerry said, the final plans are subject to the city approval, and, you know, we believe this will enhance the neighborhood. Houses that we build are about, you know, between thirty-five and four thousand square feet. There's a lot of those buildings going up, houses going up in that area, and we propose it to be very consistent with what we've done in the past. We have built one other home at sixty-two forty-one Crescent, so all of our buildings have been in Edina, so we're very familiar with the process and have not had to ask for any variances and have complied with all the city requirements. And we think this is just another opportunity for both second-story builders, my wife and I operate, as well as for the neighborhood to take a rental home into two family homes. And so really, that's all I have to say. You know, I think Kerry has been very helpful in going through the process, and as has the city, the planning commission.
Right, good. Thanks, Mr. Micheludi. Mr. Anderson, welcome, Member Anderson, welcome back.
Oh, yeah.
Does anyone on the council have a question for Mr. Micheludi? All right, at this point in time, we'll open it up then for public hearing. Director Benarott, do we have anybody in the queue? And Mr. Micheludi, stand by, we may have questions for you when we're done with the public testimony.
I will mute for now.
Mayor, members of the council, we currently do not have any callers on the line. I would recommend that you wait a minute or two before moving on, as there is a slight delay in the broadcast.
Sure. So for folks that might be listening in, you can call in at eight-hundred-three-seven-four-zero-two-two-one, and the conference ID is eight-nine-six-seven-zero-one-nine if you wish to testify. All right, thank you, Director Benarott. Did anyone have an epiphany with respect to a question for Director Teague or Mr. Micheludi?
Um, I don't really have any questions for either one. I am kind of wondering, though, in the recent past, we've had at least one instance of deciding to vote on a matter at hand without the continuance, and I'm wondering if this case might not be one that we might consider this evening.
Thoughts from other council members, as what Member Anderson is suggesting is that possibly this is a matter where we don't have to continue it until noon on July fifteenth and then deal with it on the twenty-first of July. Might we consider dealing with it this evening? Mr. Mayor? Member Sutton?
As much as I would support expedience at this point, my, I'm troubled by the fact that we've announced that we're going to keep it open until the fifteenth of July. There might be, there were some comments already on Better Together, and there may be more, and I wouldn't want people to feel like we shut the door before they had a chance to win.
Sure.
Especially given the hour.
Yeah, also, I think we announced that this was going to be our process. We were working in the virtual world, so I think we need to adhere to that process for consistency and fundamental fairness. So is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on July fifteenth and continue the action on this item to the July twenty-one city council meeting? So, Member Fisher moves. Member Brindle seconds.
Second.
Did you feel like I was, Jim Van Valkenburg brought back there? Member Brindle? Member Brindle seconds. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Sutton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. This matter is continued for public hearing until noon July fifteenth, which time it'll close, and then we'll take this up for action on our, July twenty-one, or at our July twenty-one city council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Micheludi, for your patience. You've been here with us all evening, and I appreciate your being here.
Yes, and I am going to go back and watch the Alden meeting, so now that I'm engaged in that one. All right, thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, our last hearing matter of the evening, public hearing matter, involves a proposed resolution twenty-twenty-sixty-five, which would provide for a parking stall variance and a site plan for M Health, our South Hill Hospital operation. And Director Teague has this matter, and I think we've got Samuel Disco Simo from Fairview and Pete Solomon here with us as well. And so, Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is the, as mentioned, the South Hill Fairview Hospital, proposal by M Health, located at France and Crottoon. Site's currently zoned for regional medical district. It's our only regional medical district in town. What the applicant is proposing here is to build a two-floor addition above the emergency room at the hospital. The addition would be thirty-eight thousand square feet. The purpose of the addition is to provide single beds for patients. There would be fifty-two rooms. There wouldn't be any additional beds within the hospital. It's M Health's plan to provide more single occupancy bedrooms as opposed to double. So there would be, again, no additional beds or no additional staffing. Here's a look at the location on the site plan where the addition would go. So there's no changes, no expansion to the footprint of the building. Again, it's above the existing structure. There's no changes to the site plan either. So this request requires a parking stall variance from two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight spaces to two thousand and fifty-one. That number requirement is based on number of beds, doctors, and square footage of the building. So primary issue is the variance request reasonable. We had WSB conduct a parking and traffic study to determine impacts. They also did the study back, and I believe it was two thousand thirteen, when the emergency room was built, so they expanded that study to consider this proposal. Their conclusion is the existing parking would support the project, and the roads can support the project as well. The study further concludes that the hospital could function with seventeen hundred and forty-eight parking stalls. Again, there's an existing two thousand and fifty-one spaces on the site. Also, the west parking ramp on the west side of France could be expanded a couple of levels should the hospital ever need an expansion of parking. So there is some capability to expand parking here in the future. This was considered by the planning commission at their last meeting, and also recommended approval of this on a seven to zero vote. So with that, again, staff and planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the review memo. And Chuck Rickert is here from WSB to answer any questions you might have in regard to the parking and traffic.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for the critique at this point in time? Yes, Member Brindle.
Thank you. I believe I read that we're not increasing the number of beds in the hospital, and we're not increasing the number of staff in the hospital, that the addition is to add more rooms and therefore accommodate single bedrooms, rather than in some of the, some of the combined rooms that are currently there. So when looking at the parking variance, I guess I don't understand why we'd be looking at a parking variance if we're not increasing the number of beds and we're not increasing the number of staff.
It could be the function of the increase in square footage. A case could be made. It's really the same variance that was considered back in two thousand thirteen, but given the time that's passed, it is an expansion of the hospital. There was a previous variance. We're going through this process, just to verify all those things again because of the addition.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
All right, good question, Member Brindle.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? We have representatives of the hospital here. I see Pete Solomon is named there.
Yes, I'm, this is Pete Solomon. I'm an architect with Perkins and Will, and also Fay Drake is here. She is representing the hospital. And so Fay, I don't know if you wanted to say something initially? And so Fay, I don't know if you wanted to say something initially? I know she was hanging on. Well, I thought she might have a statement to make just to talk, really to talk about the program of the changes that are being made.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Is this Fay?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Oh, we can. There you are. All right.
All right. Thank you. My name is Fay Dyke and I'm here instead of Sam. I serve as the Vice President for Patient Care and the Chief Nursing Officer at M Health Fairview Southdale Hospital. And just want to begin by saying thank you for taking the time to review this matter this evening. And we're very pleased to be a part of the wonderful community of Edina and serve at Citizens for Healthcare. We're very excited about this project in order to bring essentially private rooms to our patients. This is the primary concern we hear, most frequent complaint we hear from patients and families regarding their stay at Southdale. And so the ability to be able to do this construction and bring more rooms so that essentially we can give people private rooms, we believe that will be very beneficial to the patients and families we serve. It's something they want. We know that can help their healing. And it's also obviously in the times we're dealing with right now, living in the time of COVID, the ability to have more private rooms and improve our ability to care for people with infections is a really important opportunity for us. So Pete has the detail regarding a lot of the project and I would just turn it over to him and then also be available for questions.
All right. Mr. Solomon.
Sure. So.
Thank you, Ms. Dyke.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting me speak here. And yes, the project is adding two stories on top of the existing second floor of the building. And it's about 22,000 square feet per floor. 26 rooms, inpatient rooms on each of the floors. So 52 rooms total. And as mentioned, we are not touching the site. All of the work is happening above the existing hospital. We've had a number of meetings with the city on the way through. So we've satisfied any questions that they've had up to this point. And from our, some of our early discussions, that's when there was the conversation about that a site review parking study should be conducted. And that's really what brings us here tonight. And I guess I could, I could answer any questions that anybody would have.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Solomon. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Solomon? Or for Fay? Point in time? Okay. This is a public hearing standby. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Director Benarott is going to check to see if there are people waiting in the queue to testify regarding this matter. Director Benarott?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have one person on the line and in the queue. Operator, will you please unmute the line of James Grootz? And James, please begin by stating your full name and address before beginning your remarks.
Lines are open. Yes, my name is James Grootz and I live at 5513 Park Place. I have a question for the Fairview presenters at the planning commission. Questions were raised regarding Medicare reimbursement of single beds versus semi-private. As you know, Medicare will not reimburse for private rooms, but they will reimburse for semi-private. These questions were not answered at the planning commission. Furthermore, a point was raised at the planning commission regarding Fairview's discontinuance of the annual 4th of July fireworks. Contrary to public opinion and what you're reading in newspapers, hospitals are not going broke these days. And in fact, Fairview's willingness to build this addition underscores the fact that they are flush with money. And what I'm suggesting is that now is the time, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to try to get some continuance from prior years, prior to last year on fireworks. And also to get the parking ramp open free to the public on the evening of the fireworks. My main concern though is regarding Medicare. We can't be doing anything to harm the position of Edina seniors using these new facilities with reimbursement with Medicare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. We'll adjust these questions when we're done with the public hearing. All right. Is there anybody else in the queue?
I do not have anyone else on the line or in the queue, but like the other public hearings, I would recommend that you wait just a minute or two before moving on.
Okay. Thank you. Director Benarott, is it okay to?
Yes, I think you can move on now.
All right, we'll proceed. There was a comment made and then a question. And I think first we should entertain a motion to close the public hearing at noon on July 15th and continue the action on the item to July 21 for the city council meeting on that particular night. Is there a motion of that effect? So move.
Second.
Member Brindle seconds. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, on the motion.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member, Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. This matter is set now on the public hearing to close at noon on July 15th and continue to action on the item to our July 21 city council meeting. Mr. Gross raised a question and I don't think, Mr. Solomon, this would not be your area. And whether Ms. Dyke knows anything about this particular matter, not an insult if you don't. It's a, it's a matter of, I think, maybe some other part of the hospital. If you know something about this Medicare reimbursement issue on private versus semi-private rooms, be happy to hear from you.
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me again?
Yes.
Yes. At the planning commission, I indicated that question came up and I indicated that I believed we did not charge differently for a private room versus a semi-private room. Since the planning commission, I was able to confirm that Southdale does not charge patients more money for a private room. So there is nothing that a Medicare patient would be paying. Any patient will not be charged for a private room versus a semi-private room. So I can clear that piece up.
Okay. I don't, you can do anything about the fireworks commitment issue or maybe even know anything about it. I think it's, that's usually an issue that's been historically between the Edina Community Foundation and, as I recall anyway, and the hospital. And I think this year with being in the era of COVID, it was determined that there would not be fireworks, just like there would not be a 4th of July parade. So this is maybe a discussion to be continued to next year.
Yes, I think it was one of the ways that Southdale was able to provide support to the community. I did do some follow-up regarding that. There was, there has been some support provided. But the decision was made not to use those funds for fireworks, but for other purposes as you've indicated. So, you know, Southdale continues to provide, I believe, a great deal of commitment to the community and some of it is in, it's in a variety of ways that may not be as tangible or visible as fireworks. But we're very proud and appreciate being a part of the Edina community. And I think, you know, it is a challenging time for us in healthcare. And I think it speaks very strongly that M Health Fairview is prepared to commit to ongoing investments in Southdale Hospital and the Edina community to assure that we can provide excellent care, healthcare for its community. So I'm very proud that we're able to move forward, we hope, with this project with, with your approval.
Yes. Thanks. Thanks, Fay. Well, we'll take it up on the 21st of July at the city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just say to Ms. Dyke, you're gracious in your indulgence of those questions that have nothing to do with the variance application. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Solomon, you did, those elevations were excellent. I was really impressed with the work that Perkins and Will did.
Okay. Thank you. I'll pass it on to those who really did that work.
All right.
But now we appreciate your comments and we do hope that it'll be an embellishment or make the community better.
And for M Health and Fairview Southdale, our town is proud that we're a regional medical hub. And this longstanding relationship we've had with Fairview Southdale Hospital is very important to the city as well and we consider you to be one of our finest corporate citizens. So you can take that information back too as well.
I will. I will share that as well. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. This matter is going to be dealt with on the 21st of July. We're going to now move on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. We've got a few matters there to handle. The first matter is a variance appeal embodied in resolution 2020-58. This is a matter dealing with a cellular antenna tower proposed for Highlands Park. And we have had some prior conversation about this. And Chris Hawker, our assistant planner, has this information. We've got Mr. Roston and Mr. Shank back with us, I think, to answer questions. So.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna, this is Carrie. I'm gonna jump in and give a quick introduction here. So as, as mentioned, this is a continuation of an appeal of a planning commission approval of a setback variance to co-locate and extend the height of an existing light standard at the hockey rink, the Highlands Park. The increase in height is from 58 feet to 75 feet. Verizon antennas would be added to this pole. This would be a co-location and greatly improve reception in the Highlands area. I want to just remind the council that we are at the end of the 60-day review period. So the council has to take action this evening. At the last time you discussed this, and we've received a lot of feedback, the council has as well, in regard to the possibility of locating what was considered for other sites within the park. So Tim Barnes is here, the city's facility supervisor, to respond to those questions and talk about some of the other sites that were considered and why they don't work on the site. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim for a quick presentation and then the council can begin their discussions.
All right. Good. Thank you. Mr. Barnes, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Originally, as Carrie had stated, the city had inquired during negotiations for the small cell contract that was originally negotiated with Verizon back in 17. And part of that negotiation process, we were directed to inquire with Verizon to increase cellular coverage in the Highlands neighborhood. And so Verizon reacted to that and they said, you know what? We'll, we'll work with you as a partner. You're helping us get these small cell sites rolled out in the city. And they started to research how they could do it. They came back after that negotiation was concluded, agreement, and focused on Highlands Park, that graphic that you have up there for tonight. So looking at that, the existing light tower there is highlighted, which is right behind the shelter. So we took our staff, the parks director, the parks maintenance people, our city forester, those who would be impacted by the operations and the working of this tower. And we tried to get feedback from everyone to say, where is the best location for here? So one of the first alternate sites is number two, up there by Mirror Lakes Drive alongside a utility building and a tennis court. And the response back has been recorded from Crown Castle and Verizon that that was not adequate for their operation. It wouldn't give the best coverage. So then we had another site, which would alternate site number one, which is on the other side of the hockey rink. And due to the proximity of the water and the structure that would have to be built and the roadways, it would significantly impact again, park operations. And there was a concern of being so close to that body of water and the impacts of that with construction that that site was steered away from by Crown Castle. And then the third alternate site was along the tree line. And that site was also deemed not adequate based on the footprint that would have to be there, the damage to some of the trees. And so we came back to the existing light tower location about two or three feet away from where it's currently housed. And with that, during the whole process, I worked closely with Public Works Director Brian Olson on this to make sure that we stayed in track and carried out the wishes of the city manager and council. I'm going to mute my mic and answer any questions that may come up.
Do council members have questions for Mr. Barnes about the process they went through on site selection?
I have a couple, Your Honor.
Yes. Member Staunton.
Tim, could you put up the, the site map again? So on all of these alternatives, did you have any discussions with the applicant about whether the existing site would be abandoned if we were able to make it work at one of these alternative sites? In other words, would the T-Mobile facility move along with the new Verizon one or would there be two poles?
There would be two poles. The T-Mobile site would stay and then they would have to construct a new site for the Verizon location.
And do you know why it is that they can't move the T-Mobile along with the Verizon one?
Yeah, I believe it dates back to the original choosing of that site and the broadcast impact that they were able to gain in that area. That's what they kept alluding to as we offered the other sites, that there was the best location.
I mean, the T-Mobile, why, why, I mean, I get that, that they've concluded and there's been some discussion about this, but even if there was, let's say, alternative three turned out to be satisfactory for Verizon, do you have any sense of why T-Mobile can't, the, can't go with that or won't go with that? Or is that something I just have to ask the applicant?
We'd have to ask the applicant. They never gave a clear direction.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, with respect to the existing light tower, and if it were located there, one of the concerns I've had, and I'm interested in what you and perhaps Brian, and whether you had any conversations with our parks people, about the impact that having it remain in that location might have on future renovations to the rink, or the warming house, or a park shelter, et cetera, on the Highlands.
That was a consideration from the very beginning. And in, so a couple things happened with the site as they proposed. It would actually assist the operations of the ice making and the other activities, because it would be moved a couple feet from its current location, giving better access to the rink and port vehicle operation there. And then keeping it behind the shelter in that location helped assure the future planning of at least the former parks director, and I believe currently with Director Perry, that it was also a better location to have that facility behind the shelter so that they could do future expansion. That was a consideration.
And am I right that the T-Mobile, existing T-Mobile facility there, all of that ground equipment is in the current shelter, right?
Yes, correct.
So that, so that would, if it was to move, that would have to move with it, I suppose?
Yes, that would, you're correct.
All right, those are the questions I had. Thank you very much. I appreciate that overview.
Mr. Mayor, just, I'd like to respond to Councilmember Staunton's question as well, because I did have a quick conversation this afternoon with our director, Perry Vedder, and he did say that it does, it would have a minor impact, the presence of the antenna on options for rebuilding the cities, warming houses and infrastructure at that point, but not a, not a very major impact at all. And he in fact said, you know, we wouldn't make major investments in that park until we get a master plan for it, and it would be considered during that master planning process, and they would, they would work around it.
All right, thank you, Manager Neil. Member Brindel.
Thank you. A question I have that had came up as I was preparing for this meeting and thinking about where else could this tower go, because this tower is, and particularly the 75-foot tower, it's really pretty close to residential, and hence the variance of such significant distance. So I wonder if Garden Park was considered for a location for the Verizon Tower? It's a larger park, it's, the tower could be placed further from residential, and it's still located close enough to the Highlands neighborhood that, that I would think that the Verizon equipment would still be a benefit for the area?
That Garden Park was not brought up, Councilwoman Brindle, when we were in the consideration.
Your Honor.
Yes, Director Neil.
I asked, I suggested to Mr. Roston this afternoon that he might be prepared to answer such a question from Councilmember Brindle, and I'm sure that he is.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Roston.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Neil, thank you. We did this afternoon look at Garden Park internally, and there are at least two problems with that. Most significantly, it will not solve the problem of the lack of coverage in this particular donut hole to the Highlands area. If you look at, previously, we've submitted a coverage map both before and after. If you move the tower that far south, it's going to take a significant portion of the donut hole out of coverage that we're trying to cover from a, from a availability of a cell service standpoint, number one. Number two, and this answers, I think, both Councilmember Brindel's and Councilmember Staunton's question. What will most likely happen is it will leave both a tower in the Highlands Park and then have a second tower in Garden Park, and won't solve the city's co-location obligations, I'm sorry, co-location requirements in its ordinance. To get back to Councilmember Staunton's question, T-Mobile cannot be compelled, at least not by Crown, to agree to another location on there. They have a lease, they have the right to be there. T-Mobile can frankly just say no to moving the location, and we anticipate they would because there would be a cost to T-Mobile to move, and if we move that tower either away from the ground equipment they have, they'll lose a significant signal, because Mr. Schenk can correct me if I'm wrong, the T-Mobile one is not fiber optic at this point in time, and you lose a fair amount of signal if you move the ground equipment farther away from the tower. And beyond that, there's just no mechanism we have to force T-Mobile to move the location. So all of those create impediments to moving this either somewhere else in Highlands Park or moving it to Garden Park.
Other questions? Member Brindle, did you have any follow-on?
Okay. I have a couple for the city attorney.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
So I'm trying to, we've heard some, we've heard a variety of concerns from our residents on this issue, and I just want to understand what we, what areas we're able to act on and what areas we're not able to act on. So for instance, there's been some people who, a lot of folks who've raised health concerns, and I don't, you know, I'm not a scientist, I'm not an RF engineer, I don't know whether those health concerns are legitimate or not, but my question for you is whether, as a city, we can deny or prevent a sighting of a tower based on concerns about the health effects of that tower?
Mayor, members of the council, in my judgment, you cannot do so, because federal preemption, federal rules and regulations governing this.
So the federal law is acting on the health issues and makes that decision, and we don't get to do that?
Yes, they've made the decision, they've drawn the conclusion that it is not a health issue, and we have to, that's their conclusion, and we're bound by it.
So if, so if it complies with their regulations, then we can't deny it based on health?
Correct.
How about aesthetics? The way it looks, the appearance, the kind of visual clutter?
Again, the same answer. We really have very little judgment. They have no authority over that.
So on the location or the search for alternatives, is that a place where we have some room to maneuver?
A bit.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Manager Neil.
You know, just expanding a little bit on what the city attorney is advising here, I mean, I think what you're viewing in Edina is a, is a kind of a conflict which is going on all over this country. You know, the mobile phone companies are politically powerful, they've worked very hard to get the federal government, the FCC in particular, to bend their discretion their way, and we are, we just, we have to deal with that. We're on the low end of the government food chain. So we've done our best with them in terms of locational decisions in this general area. I do think it's fair to say that it's worth noting that we have it, we do have an interest in better, better mobile communications in the community, as 70% of the calls that are placed to our 911 emergency response system come from mobile phones. And so there is definitely public interest and public safety interest in making sure that we have a highly functional, high-quality mobile communication system in the city.
With regard to, this is for Attorney Knudsen, I think, with regard to aesthetics, you know, where Member Staunton said a lot of neighbors had a concern about what it looked like being 17 feet taller than, or what it would like, would look like being 17 feet taller than what's there now. Isn't there a Minnesota case on that very issue about aesthetics, that just because neighbors don't like the idea of it, that that's not a sufficient basis for denial of variance? That is absolutely correct. And to the extent the city denies the variance request, that effectively prohibits good wireless service in an area of the city with telecommunications connectivity problems, isn't that a potential violation of federal law? Yes. All right, I mean, so we've got some real limitations here, it seems to me, and then back to the health concerns, just to reinforce that, if the federal government has otherwise said that this type of technology meets health standards, locals have little they can say about it, is my understanding. That is correct. All right, okay. Anybody else have questions? Comments?
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't really have a question as such. I found a pretty good trail guide to go through that park and spend some time not very long ago. In fact, he sits on this council. We spent some time kicking around over there and saying, is there any, where are the alternative sites? And this conversation tonight has resolved those concerns, you know, we're going to have a tower there regardless, it sounds like, if we're going to improve service. So I think that, I think what's notable, my takeaway from this evening is, is the exploration and, you know, spending the time as a group and asking the right questions, exploring it, and resolving it as best we can for the community. So it may not be the perfect site for that tower in terms of latitude down the road, as to what we can do in that park if there were a warming house improvement or improvement of a hockey facility there, but the benefit to the public in terms of reception overrides all of it. And frankly, as you've mentioned, our latitude is very narrow, so I guess I'm satisfied to go forward.
Yep. I think we've covered our ability to locally regulate, we've covered the health concerns issue, we've covered the aesthetics issue, the concerns neighbors have about looking at something that's taller. We walked through with the one thing we had some flexibility on, that was the location, and then we've been able to accomplish co-location, so to Remember Staunton's point, it could be that we end up with two towers down there, one 50 feet, one 70, 75 feet, or whatever, 70 feet, 58 feet and 75 feet, so.
Yes, Member Staunton. Not to interrupt, but I, you know, the place I got was, I, you know, I felt like we had some room to maneuver in terms of exploring alternative locations, and even in exploring that part of the park up in the tree line on the ridge where the exist, where the ground equipment is planned to go, struck me as a viable alternative, but what really changed my mind on that was learning that we can't move the other towers, so then we have two towers in addition to probably, well, almost certainly losing that oak tree that's back there, as well as a lot of other trees, and probably losing a portion of the auxiliary rink there, using, you know, the pavement we'd have to put in there to give access. So I wanted to see if we could make something happen back there, but now that I know that we're going to have another tower there anyway, it's hard for me to justify tearing out the trees and creating more pavement in that part when we're still going to have a tower at the rink.
All right, so the Resolution 2020-58 would approve a 170.1-foot setback variance at the park, which is, which has an address of 5200 Doncaster Way. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right, yeah. Motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton. Any further discussion?
I would just, Mr. Mayor, I would just say that I learned an awful lot in the last couple weeks on this, and the real difference maker that's been mentioned is the fact that not realizing that T-Mobile doesn't have to go anywhere, we're talking two towers, this is sort of a, when it really comes down to it, our level of discretion is so small, and there's just no better solution, so.
Yeah, well put. I think everybody has thought this through well with respect to all the different issues that are involved, and realize that we don't have as much flexibility as we thought. All right, roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Huglin.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next matter is Resolution 2020-62, which Ms. Hawkinson is going to have a presentation on, would call for a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the city-owned property to the Edina Housing Foundation. Ms. Hawkinson?
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues for sending me texts to make sure I was awake, as it's past my bedtime. So I appreciate that. If I may share the, if I may share the screen. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we can.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is a repeat for you all. It from, I presented this idea at our June 2 work session with the Edina Housing Foundation, and I'm bringing it back here. So some of the, the presentation you've seen before, but we have a different audience that may be at, tuning into this meeting. As you know, housing costs are a significant barrier for households to move to Edina. As I stated in the staff report, people who work in the city, such as lab techs, nurses, or aides in a hospital, senior housing employees, daycare providers, teachers, teachers' aides, grocery store clerks, et cetera, are deemed essential workers during this pandemic, yet they cannot afford to own a home here. According to the Maxfield Consulting, between 2010 and 2019, 872 new single-family housing permits are issued. The average price of the tear downs was a little over $421,000, while the average price of the rebuilds was just under $1.2 million. In October of 2019, the average list price of a previously occupied home was $799,000, and for a new home, newly constructed home, it was a little over $1.46 million. The cost of housing is the context for the 2019 Quality of Life Survey, where Edina ranked lower than other Minnesota communities in the area of availability of affordable quality housing, with only 32% rating this as the excellent or good. So even though the housing permit suggests that there's a demand for large luxury homes, which there is for sure, the Maxfield study also points to the demand for entry-level affordable single-family homes. Maxfield estimates that by 2040, there's a demand for 60 additional affordable ownership homes. The report goes on to conclude that due to being a built-out community, and due to the high value of land, addressing this need will be challenging. I know other cities use their publicly-owned land to further I know other cities use their publicly owned land to further their public purpose of providing affordable homeownership. I was part of many of these transactions in previous jobs. So I decided to seek out city-owned land for this purpose. Of all the properties owned by the city, you know, after removing parkland, right-of-way, active street medians, city hall, I came up with a list of thirty-eight parcels. Shared this list with the engineering department. And due to flood zones, utility easements, this list was reduced to five possible lots. Upon further review of terrain and zoning, the list was further reduced to just two city-owned lots. One of the two was excluded because of an easement with the City of Hopkins. So that leaves one lot that is deemed buildable for single-family ownership. This brings us to Dugan Plaza. And so here's the map. This was a right of, the area outlined in blue is the median in a right-of-way. That would be the extension of the Dugan Plaza. And it was terminated at Amber Crombie and grassed over. And the back of the lot is along Normandale Road. So here's a picture of the lot. The city-owned median, oh, sorry. It's a, it's a former street median with a right-of-way on either side. And the whole thing has been grassed over. As you can see here, then this shows the neighbors and the homes on either side of this vacant lot. The Edina Housing Foundation is interested in acquiring this lot for a dollar for the purpose of creating affordable ownership housing. The sale of a city-owned median will require, require a public hearing. So at our HRA meeting on last Thursday, I presented a program, Homes Within Reach. And I was saying that that would serve homeowners with incomes between fifty percent and eighty percent of area median income. This Dugan Plaza site, we anticipate will serve households with incomes between one eighty and one twenty of the area median income. And that equates with roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of household income. Now, the lot, I would, I should say, it's, that it's relatively flat, it's approximately a hundred and thirty-three feet deep and a hundred and two plus feet wide. And it's thirteen, oh, thirteen thousand six hundred and eighteen square feet. So what would be the next steps? If on the twenty-first, we are able to have a public hearing, and if this is approved to convey the site to the Edina Housing Foundation, then the Housing Foundation would go through the process of requesting a vacation of the right-of-way on both sides of the median. They'd request the plating of the median with the vacated right-of-ways. They'd submit a request for proposals to the affordable housing, single family housing developers. They'd select a developer with the best experience, capacity, and demonstrated outcomes. They had require the house designed to complement the existing neighborhood. They would require that the developer would hold a public, a community meeting to gather input on the proposed design. And they would sell to an income-qualified homeowner with restrictions to be placed in the property to keep it affordable for as long as legally possible. So that's it for tonight. So again, the request tonight is to be able to hold a public hearing for the conveyance of the site to the foundation on July twenty-first.
That was a nice presentation, supplementing your presentation from some time ago. Are there questions for our housing manager, Ms. Hawkinson?
I do.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. Stephanie, we got a letter this, this week from Hope Melton suggesting a twin home on this site. What, what is your thought? I mean, listening to you, it's a single-family home. If, if I take you at, at what I hear, it's a single-family home. Could a twin home go here? And if not, why not?
Councilmember Brindle, and Chair and councilmembers, yes. In fact, when I have had preliminary conversations with a couple of the affordable, single-family developers, they noted how big the lot was. And they, they went so far as to suggest a lot split and create two separate individual lots. I know that that would be a large hurdle. And so I think it is completely feasible from a building perspective. The planners would have to opine about, you know, zoning and other things to put a twin home there.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Manager Hawkinson? Director Teague, any comment on the zoning issue?
Yeah, if I might, I could, so to put a duplex there would require a rezoning of the property to R two. We typically see, we typically see R two zoning districts clustered together and on busy arterial-type roadways. I'm not sure if an R two would fit here in the middle of a, of a single-family neighborhood. So it, it would be a, an, another difficult hurdle to get over to, to rezone the property to R two.
All right. That prompt any further comment or inquiry from councilmembers? All right. Is there a motion that's suggested by Manager Hawkinson to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-two, which would call for a public hearing on July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property to the Edina Housing Foundation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Fisher, second by Member Brindle. Respect to this particular resolution, twenty twenty dash sixty-two. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
We'll have a hearing on this matter on July twenty-first.
Very much.
Thank you, Manager Hawkinson. Thanks for, thanks for hanging up with us. If you're bored, just get up in about an hour and we'll see if we're still going. All right. Thank you. Good night. Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-seven would, if approved, approve a right-of-way easement vacation at Oak Lane and Garden Avenue. And Director Milner has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a continuation of the discussion we had at the last council meeting. Get my screen up. There we go. So continuation of the discussion on the vacation of easements at Oak Lane from the following council meeting. At that time, we gave two options for this vacation, and we've narrowed it down to one we think is the most appropriate. And that's vacating the entire right-of-way, requiring new easement documents from each owner for the sidewalk, trailway, drainage, and utility purposes. So to clarify some questions from last time, all the properties highlighted in green were part of that application. The stars were that one individual family owns those four separate properties. We want to consider vacating the hatched Oak Lane area here, or the colored areas in here. So each color represents a different underlying property owner. We would want to vacate all the colored properties and then get easements from the ones between the red arrows to continue those easements. So those easements would be from the four starred properties. So we have four easement documents. Those documents have been created by the city attorney and forwarded to the property owners, and they are in agreement to execute and sign those easements. So we want to make this vacation tonight contingent on, on getting those additional four easements. The two properties on the very east, or the beige and the dark green one, we would just vacate those with no additional easements. One of the questions was access for these three properties, which are owned by the same family. With the big green arrow, they would still have access of approximately forty feet off of Garden Avenue. And if they so choose in the future, they could create driveway easements for all three properties across those, since they own all three. We would recommend approval of resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-seven to vacate that right-of-way, contingent on establishing new easements. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner? All right, good. This is a matter that we've discussed, discussed quite extensively. So Director Milner has proposed a resolution, has told us what he would like to see us do. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-seven to vacate segments of Oak Lane and Garden Avenue right-of-way, contingent on the adjacent property owners providing trailway, sidewalk, drainage, and utility easements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-seven is approved. Thank you. Good work on that one by many, many folks, including many of the neighbors that were willing to talk about how to deal with this issue. And Sarah Elliott, too.
Exactly. It took a lot of reasonable people to figure this out.
Yeah, well put. Member Staunton, well put. The last matter we have in front of us this evening in this portion of the agenda is Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty dash oh eight. This is a second reading on the Amendment of Chapter twelve of the Edina City Code concerning tobacco. Jeff Brown, our Community Health Administrator, has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. This should be just a couple slides. This is kind of a review from two weeks ago. I'm just, I just have the timeline here, like we reviewed last meeting, just showing that kind of the journey of, of where this item started. And then basically just a quick review of what it will do. It will add a definition of flavored tobacco products to City Code, and then prohibit those, those products for sale in Edina. And then tonight is just the second reading of the ordinance and motion to approve and a final vote. And the ordinance would go into effect September first. That's what I have.
All right. Questions for Jeff Brown? Had a lot of correspondence on this issue from healthcare organizations and nonprofits, people concerned with wellness. Member Fisher?
Yeah, we certainly have gotten a lot of input on this. I know somewhere along the line, we talked about how many businesses would be affected by this. Do we, we know what that answer is?
As far as licensed tobacco sellers in the city, we have less than twenty. I think it's about fourteen, but I can, I can confidently say less than twenty.
Okay. I just, I mean, it's, it's obviously one of those things you think about. We've certainly seen a lot of compelling documentation about the health benefits and the importance of this. But just trying to also balance the fact that, you know, there are businesses out there in our city that are already struggling a little bit. But thank you.
All right. Other comments by councilmembers? Member Brindle, you don't have your, you're not on mute. I thought maybe you wanted to say something, or Member Anderson?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm, I'm okay with it. I, I have, you know, I, we've got, as Mike says, as Councilmember Fisher said, we have gotten mail from service gas station owners where this is, this is part of what they, they count on for people coming in and spending money at their place rather than just pumping gas. But the, the overarching, the overarching issue for me is accessibility and really being, being something sought after by, by young people, which was the whole idea in going to Tobacco Twenty-One in the first place. And we've gone so far with it, to the point where now it's a state law. So, so I, I just don't see going back on it.
Member Anderson, any comment?
Nothing more to add, Your Honor.
Okay. I, I, I think about this matter in the same way I thought about Tobacco Twenty-One. I just think about the long-term healthcare cost implications of having young people get hooked on tobacco products and using flavor, flavored items as a way to induce them into, you know, that gateway of lifelong addiction and then all kinds of health problems. And I think on balance, for me, it's looking at that impact on our merchants versus the long-term health cost implications and, and effect on people's lives personally, and come down on the side of supporting this particular code change. I think it's, I think it's a smart thing to do. It's, it's a wise public health move. When you think about public health, safety, welfare, this falls right into that category for me. So we had approved this on a first reading basis. Is there a motion to approve Amendment to Ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh eight and grant second reading to the changes that are described by our Health Administrator, Jeff Brown?
So moved.
Moved by Member Brindle, second?
Second.
Member Staunton, seconds. Further discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Ellison?
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
Ordinance changes adopted.
Thanks.
All right. Yeah, thanks, everybody. It's, good work. Good work all around tonight. A lot of interesting things to work on and some complexities involved. And we get to address many of them again on the twenty-first of July. Correspondence petitions, anything that's come in? Ms. Ellison or Manager Neil?
You've got everything in front of you tonight.
All right. Aviation noise update, Member Brindle?
Thank you. No real new news. There are fewer planes flying, and the planes that are flying have fewer people in them. First class, they are selling fifty percent of the seats. And in the rest of the airplane, they are selling sixty percent of the seats. And at that, the plane is full. And so, so it's just, it's just interesting to see the effect of the pandemic on people, whether they're buying gas to put in their car, which they're not doing as often, or if they're getting on an airplane, which they're not doing as often. So, but we've got, we've got a noise oversight committee meeting in July is the next one.
All right. Good. Thank you. Any, do you have anything supplemental on aviation noise?
Yes, only to add that Delta Airlines has stopped selling middle seats.
Yes, only to add that Delta Airlines has stopped selling middle seats.
Yes.
As well, so that's
Yeah, that's the sixty percent, yep.
It's a kind thing to do.
Yep.
I noticed on the news last night, Manager Neil, that Bill Lynch was speaking on behalf of Delta, and we had not seen him for several years, so it was kind of good to see him on television. All right, Mayor Mary, why don't you, Mayor, Member Brindle, why don't you continue on with your council comments?
Okay, so a couple comments. The roundabout at Creek Valley Road and Valley View Road, we've gotten some mail about that. And, and so I think before it goes out to bid, I'd like to learn more about the concerns that people have about that roundabout. We initially considered it and moved forward with it, and now are hearing from other people who would be affected by it, so I'd like to know and whether I just don't want to risk creating an undesirable situation there. We're also hearing from people who are encouraging the city to require masks when out in public. Minneapolis requires it. I don't know if the city of Edina wants to require it, but it's probably something that we as a council should think about whether we want to do that. It's, it's I guess, at one level, it's a personal choice, but on another level, you're affecting other people. So it's something we should talk about. And then, last Wednesday evening, I attended a, what was called a conversation circle in, at a home that was in a driveway, hosted by one of the residents in Roland Green. And the purpose for the conversation was to just start a kind, start talking, to start somewhere, to think about how we each feel about racism, how we how we address it in our lives, and what we have to unlearn, how we unpack, how we feel about racism, how we unlearn what we've carried with us, and how we learn how to move forward. It was a very moving conversation. There were probably twenty families there, and we were all sitting in a circle in a, in clearly a large driveway. Five, at least five, maybe six of the families in this circle were African-American, and they live in Roland Green. And what's, there's a few things that are poignant about that. One big one for me is that after the first night of rioting in the Twin Cities, people woke up in Roland Green to handmade signs that were taped to the stop sign poles and, and, and street signs saying, "Hey, white people, black lives matter." And so, few of the neighbors took those down. But I honestly was surprised, and as I thought about it, I was delighted to see such a diverse neighborhood in one of our most exclusive neighborhoods. And so, but the, it really you sit there and you, you know, when it's your turn to speak, you wonder, what, how are you going to start? What are you going to say? And, and it really, as we went around the circle, some of the people who are African-American said, "I've been, I've been standing there with my hands behind my back. It's happened to me." Another said that when his teenage son goes out in the evening, they talk about, "All right, here's what you wear, here's what you don't wear." And so, so there are things that I don't even think about that are very real for other people in our community. And I think it's extremely valuable to understand and gain some empathy with that. There was a, there was an editorial that I found. NFL player Larry Fitzgerald grew up in South Minneapolis. And, and, I mean, it's a long editorial, but just a little bit of what he said, he said, "We're just not listening to each other. The language of the unheard has broken the silence of our willful deafness and has led to the death and destruction, so we're just not hearing each other." In some ways, refusing to hear each other. But, but the situation with the death of George Floyd has just called all of us to stop what we're doing, and maybe it's because it's in the midst of a pandemic. But it's really gotten our attention, and it's, it's really caused me to to stand up and take notice and decide if I'm ever going to figure out how I feel about this, it's now. So, but this, this conversation was the, was a really good first step in figuring that out.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
You know, we, we each search our conscience these days. We search our national conscience. And we struggle with who we are, where we've been, what we look forward to. And I, I, I'm struck by Mary Brindle, who is one of the most genuine, sincere, well-intentioned people that you can come across. And I, when I listen to her and I think she is surprised that we have an exclusive neighborhood in our city that's diverse. And it, that, it, it brings to me to light the fact that we don't understand. It's, we struggle with it. We can't, we can't understand. And we've got some work ahead of us as a group, I know. And I, and it's appropriate work, and we'll, we'll we'll do what we can do as a group of people and do our best in terms of our commitment to our city to see what can be changed and what route to take. And I think we'll come to some conclusions. And I think we'll be better people for it. And if we improve our lot, improve the life of this town, get through to some people, and come to terms with ourselves, then I think that it'll be important work on a personal level and as a group.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Staunton?
I can't add to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Fisher?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Staunton. I really can't add much to what Councilmember Brindle and Anderson have said. I talked at our last meeting about the importance of not being silent about really important things, and this is clearly one of those really important issues that we, we just have to get out and talk about and make change. And I guess I would just ask Mr. Neil to talk about, give us an update when it gets to the city manager's component about what we're, what sort of things we are doing or trying to start doing as a community in terms of the community conversations. I know we talked about that. And just give us some updates as to where we're, you know, because we're getting a lot of emails and people are asking the questions. I want to make sure we're giving consistent answers and accurate answers.
Yep, I'll do that.
All right, good. Yeah, that was the same direction I was heading, Member Fisher, was to ask Manager Neil to address some of the emails that we've been receiving. People, obviously very concerned, genuinely concerned about, I won't call it police reform, but I'll call it our policing practices. What are our policing practices with respect to some of the things that they've seen in terms of banning chokeholds, requiring de-escalation, warnings, you know, exhaustion of methods before you shoot, duty to intervene, a whole continuum of things to address. And I think Manager Neil has some thoughts about, from discussing this with the chief, having a conversation led by our Human Rights and Relations Commission on policing practices and racial justice and an extension of what we're working on or what we did work on with our recent Equity Task Force. And I'll let him talk about that momentarily. It's also time to be thinking about not only George Floyd and the aftermath of George Floyd and how we measure racial progress. Maybe it'll be before George and after George as we work on this together. But you can see already that it has a real mainstream feel to it, in my mind. When you see two hundred kids marching from Edina High School to the community center, and ninety-five percent of them are Caucasian, are white, with some of their brown and black friends, it's impressive. When you go to City Hall on a Monday noon and there's a rally or a protest there for George Floyd, and most of the people are white, it's telling me that this has really struck a chord. So we need to be right there with the people in our community. They want us to lead on these issues, and I think we should continue that practice that we've had over the past few years of leading on some of these racial justice issues with respect to our own community and maybe beyond. On the police side of things, I would say that, in sitting in on a phone conversation the U.S. Conference of Mayors had on the work they're doing on setting up a task force to look at police reform and racial justice, one of the, one of the co-chairs of that group is a woman named Jane Castor, who is a thirty-one-year police veteran and the former chief of police of Tampa, now the mayor of Tampa. She said, "One of the challenges for police officers is that every officer in the United States gets judged by the conduct of Derek Chauvin." And, you know, if you, if you sell real estate like Ron Anderson did all of his life, or you're a lawyer like Kevin and me, and an architect like Mike, you get a bad apple here and there, but the whole profession doesn't get judged by a bad behavior of a few people. But in the police, in the world of enforcement, law enforcement, it's apparently a different story. And so there, there's morale to be thinking about there, too. We've got a great police force with wonderful people working for us in the city of Edina. And we need to be mindful of what they're going through as well. And thinking about what they've chosen for a profession, and so many of them that are here to protect and serve and living up to that oath. We've got to be mindful of everything here as we go forward. So I'm with all of you. I'm eager to have that next step. With respect to requiring masks out in public, we've had some of those requests from some of our residents, and I'm frankly not sure we have the ability to mandate that as a statutory city. And Roger Knutson, can you tell us more about that?
Mayor?
Yes?
That's something we'd have to review further, but it isn't clear, certainly is not clear that we have that authority. But if you want us to, we'll review it carefully.
Okay.
What would be the sentiment of the council on that issue? Going to look at the issue and at least see what our options are? We, it seems like we're flattening the curve a little bit right now. I don't know if we'll head for a second phase of this. Manager Neil, your thoughts on this?
Yeah, my, my thoughts are that, you know, I, I am sure that we, I'm sure that I don't have the authority in the emergency, in the state of emergency ordinance that we've adopted to compel people to wear them. I frankly don't believe compelling people to wear them is the, is the right approach. I think we are getting more and more compliance, much higher levels of compliance than I thought in many commercial establishments and in public places, just through social norms. So compelling them at this point could actually be counterproductive, in my view, and that's why I think a lot of cities surrounding Minneapolis and St. Paul have not taken that step. So my advice to you would be that we not compel them, that we continue to encourage them and keep that, keep that momentum going.
All right, I've been doing that, and the mayor's minute is encouraging people to wear masks out in public, certainly indoors. So what about the issue that Member Brindle raised? Director Milner was good to point out that we had dealt with this issue of Creek Valley Road and Valley View Road about a year ago, and whether we should be revisiting it now? Sounded like it was a fairly even split on people that were for it or against it. I'm wondering what your thoughts are?
I think Mr. Milner and I can discuss that offline and, and discuss the pros and cons of moving it ahead before we have another chance to talk to you about it.
Okay. All right. All right, and I wanted to thank Member Brindle for, over the weekend, dealing with some of the issues and talking to some of the folks over on Mendelson, about some of the worries that they have over there. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I don't have anything further. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things before we talk about the HRC. One is that we have identified members and appointed members to the Street Funding Task Force. If you'll recall, this is a city manager task force. We've agreed to their, their scope and to their mission, and the, the members of that commission are going to be David Alkire, Chip Howard, Kathy Kelly, Hamid Bantadi, Ralph Zickert, Matt Shear, and Anne Swenson. And Anne Swenson's going to chair the task force. So they have, they've all agreed to serve, and so the next phase of their service is to get them, get them together for an organizational meeting and, and start reviewing their, their objectives and their timelines. So we're working on that as we speak. Some good news from earlier this week from St. Paul, a couple pieces of good news. One is that we, our South Metro Public Safety Training Facility Bonding Bill request has been part of the House bill for, for a long time, really. But what's new is that we, our project just made it into the Senate bill. And so, being in both bills is a good sign. When the conference committee gets together and they start to weed through what's going to stay in or what's going to be left out of the final bill, one of the, one of the most important factors in, in being in the final bill is whether you're in both bills when that process starts, so that's good. We also have heard, and we've seen, that the Senate has passed its bill that distributes the CARES Act, federal CARES Act dollars, to local governments in Minnesota. And we know that in that bill, our allocation of those monies is $3.9 million. We are waiting for the House to take a similar action. They're expected to do that possibly tomorrow, maybe on, but as late as Thursday. And if those bills are, if there's some reconciliation that needs to happen, we hope that can happen very quickly, and the governor can sign that, that bill and get the money out, out the door as quick as possible. So I'll keep you updated on that. Really, the, the issue I wanted to spend just a little bit of time talking with you about tonight is one of the, of how do we respond to the many, many emails that, that you're receiving? you're receiving, that staff are receiving, that want to, that want to have a community conversation or discussion around issues of race, policing, criminal justice system, law enforcement, what are our law enforcement policies, et cetera? I'm seeing that, I'm seeing the volume of these not, it has not begun to dissipate. So one of the ideas that I had with, with our staff was convening such a conversation in the community and really asking our, our Human Rights and Relations Commission to be the lead convener of that kind of conversation. That allows council members to participate, but it really puts them in the role of, of leading the process, leading the formation of the process, which is really a lot of hard work. And, but it's something they're interested in doing and I'm interested in, I would like the council to give them that kind of direction. I think that would be an important statement for them to know that that's coming directly from you and it's something that we could begin to talk with the community about as well and begin the process of, of having this conversation that a lot of people want to have, including a lot of city staff want to have as well.
All right. Manager Neal, what kind of a motion would you prefer on, on that matter?
A motion to direct the, the HRC to, to form and, and lead a community conversation around race, policing and justice in the community. I'm trying to think offhand about what, what should be in that, what should be in that resolution, but that motion, but something of that nature.
Sure. Is there a motion of that effect?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Brindle. That we direct the HRC to form a group and determine a methodology for having a community conversation around policing and racial justice.
Their, their next regular meeting, in fact, their first meeting since the, since the pandemic is scheduled for June 23rd. And if the council makes this direction, they will clear the decks and take this issue on at that meeting.
All right. Very good.
And I think it's also important, you know, this is one thing and it's a good start. And I think as Member Brindle said earlier tonight, you know, having conversations is a good, good start, but it's a long road and, and we should be doing lots of things and hopefully this will spark that. One thing I think would be helpful from a staff perspective, Scott, is to communicate some of the things that we have as policies. We've been getting a lot of questions from folks encouraging us to adopt, for instance, 21st Century policing recommendations, a variety of other things. And I think many have been pleasantly surprised when I've emailed back to them after hearing from you that, yeah, all of those things are already part of our policy. So it'd be good to start again, start making sure we're communicating information about what's going on in our department. And I would hope that we would invite our police to be part of this conversation as well and help us understand their perspective too. So.
Absolutely.
It's going to take everybody in this.
Yep. Agreed.
And I had some conversations with people about what they've seen online at eight, Arabic eightcan'twait.org. And those are eight policies proven to curtail police violence. And when I checked with Manager Neal and Chief Nelson, we've got all of those policies in place that are embodied in that eightcan'twait.org website. So that was another pleasant thing to be able to tell people or helpful thing to be able to tell people. It was also, I forgot to mention to Manager Neal, when Jane Castor, the mayor of Tampa, was talking about helping lead this task force, she has done a, this would be for Chief Nelson. And I think I, I think she sent this out to the mayors. It was a training video that she did years ago for her officer corps called, Don't Be That Guy. And it's, don't be that guy that loses patience, that, you know, expresses his humanity or her humanity, gets tired and hits a flashpoint. And it was really quite an effective training video apparently. I'll see if I can find it in my email and forward that on to you and you can send it to the chief.
All right. Thank you.
But I agree with Member Staunton. I, I don't know where else to turn and what else we should be doing. I want to put the HRC to work. All of that takes a little bit of time. I don't know if we should be having council listening sessions in the interim like Member Brindle is doing on a broader basis. Whether we should be trying to meet with folks, like our Rotary Club has talked about meeting with Rotary Clubs up in North Minneapolis. Whether we should be meeting with state legislators from near north side, near south side, as a group of councils with other cities. There's a big educational component involved here, but I think all of us are eager to get moved to action some way, somehow fairly quickly and not just continue to admire this problem of racial injustice. So other, if people can think of things that we should be doing as a council or a community, you know, let's, let's talk about it. Manager Neal, anything else?
That's all I have for you tonight, sir.
Did we pass that motion? Did we, or did we just talk about it?
I think we just talked about it.
We need a roll call.
Yeah, we need a roll call. Okay.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
And anything else that people have this evening or this morning?
I'd move adjournment.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Anderson to adjourn. Further discussion, roll call please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Might, might even be light up there still.
Yeah. Well, look, Mike, it must be heating up in the cabin. His face has been getting red as the evening has gone on. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for your work extraordinarily well done tonight. That was a, a lot of content and a lot of complexity.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.